Okay, welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of October twentieth. I recognize we reside on the territory of the Shanu and Supl nations. So we have a couple of presentations, have the agenda approval first. We have a, everybody agree about the agenda? Moved by Mayor Little, seconded by Counselor Gray, all in favor?
Would like to move amendment to the agenda?
Um, okay, what would that be?
That tonight's council of the whole agenda be amended to include an item under other business? To consider a resolution recommending that a special council meeting be held this evening? Immediately following the conclusion of this committee of the whole meeting to discuss our tax exemption policy. So moved.
Ms. Hanson, is that possible?
Has, has it been seconded? Is there a secondary?
Seconded by Counselor Donaldson.
Counselor Epp, um, through you to our deputy corporate officer. So I believe the motion is to hold a council meeting after this meeting. And so I, I think that is the question of whether, um, that, that is the question maybe to our deputy corporate officer.
Um, council would have to waive the twenty-four hour notice requirement and it would have to be a special council meeting. So obviously, no notice has been given.
We can't do this tonight.
You have.
I believe we can, the meeting would start, the first order of business of the meeting would be to waive the notice requirement for the meeting.
If the motion passes.
All right, all right, so, uh, any more discussion?
Um, I would vote in opposition to this because, uh, the council, the rest of the council hasn't had former notice. So we haven't been able to prepare for this, nor is it transparent, not only to the other council members, but it's not transparent uh, to, uh, the public. And so I think we should do things, uh, in order, there's a reason why you give twenty-four hours notice. Um, I think we should go according to, to our usual processes.
So perhaps I could explain the motion. So the purpose of the special council meeting would be to consider a motion to grant the twenty-twenty-six property tax exemption to eligible community groups in accordance with Michozen Permissive Tax Exemption Policy, F one hundred point six zero. We have very little time to act, but if we meet tonight, there is still time to pass a permissive tax exemption bylaw by October thirty-first. It means waiving notice for a special meeting as a first order of business. Putting bylaw notice in Capitol Daily this Wednesday and next Wednesday rather than in the print media in accordance with section ninety-four point four of the community charter. And holding another special meeting next week, probably Wednesday to give three readings, Thursday fourth reading, and then we're ready to go on October thirty-first, according to the provincial law. Why hold a special meeting on this topic? In two words, procedural fairness. I've got six points. One, we did not provide reasonable notice on the decision to be made on July fourteenth. There was no notice of the elimination of tax exemption process. There was no notice on the use of the grant process in its stead. Um, and Counselor Epp, I think you said the decision will be a shock to some. The second point, we did not provide clear information about the decision-making criteria. We asked the various organizations to fill in an application this year for the first time ever. And then we didn't use, or the council didn't use the criteria, um, when they made their decision that night. Evidenced by the approval of a grant to the Humane Society when the staff note explains that the Humane Society did not meet the eligibility criteria for a permissive tax exemption. Now I do recall that in March third, twenty twenty-five, this council did approve a tax exemption for twenty twenty-six for the Humane Society before the policy was adopted. The third point, on July fourteenth, council did not provide clear and meaningful reasons for its decision. I wasn't in the room, but I went and looked at the tape. Words were spoken like, I was previously unaware of the non-municipal portion of taxes were included in the permissive tax exemption. Or reasonable and what taxpayers expect. Or my impression is there would be no financial harm to organizations. Or the grant is, or only the municipal portion of taxes, that would be fair. The fourth point, uh, procedural fairness, as far as I'm aware, no information was provided to eligible organizations about any available review and appeal processes. Point five, for some organizations, the decision was not based on what I would call relevant information. And we've learned that, for example, the financial picture at Saint Mary's Anglican, we've had quite a few letters from the church explaining their financial situation. Different than what was expressed in our note, I think, or the understanding therein. We've also received a correspondent from Morgan Yates about the B C Parks Foundation and its situation financially. No one raised those issues at the table that night. My sixth point and final point, uh, we were, I don't believe that council was considered of individual needs and circumstances of the organizations affected. I think of Saint Mary's in particular, but we've had plenty of correspondence and residents saying the ripple effects on organizations served in our community are not positive. And I don't believe there's been discussion with the eligible organizations on the impact of the change from a permissive tax exemption to the grant, which is provided in a smaller amount. So in summary, I think council has a duty of fairness that has not been applied here and should be remedied forthwith. We can do that with a special council meeting tonight, um, after that time is out.
Counselor Shukin.
Thank you, Counselor Epp. Um, Counselor Gray mentions the July fourteenth meeting and he said he wasn't, didn't attend that meeting or wasn't at the table. Um, I am pretty sure that Counselor Gray was at the table. I recall watching the discussion and Counselor Gray was seated at that, that seat. Um, I recognize Counselor Gray was not at the September fifteenth meeting. But it is the July fourteenth meeting when there was full discussion of the options before us. So now if that's an honest mistake, fair enough, but, um, yeah.
Sure, I'll correct that, I'm talking about the September fifteenth meeting, I got my meetings mixed up. We talked about it on, um, the first was March third, where we granted the twenty-twenty-six tax exemption to the Humane Society. Then on June thirty, there was a council meeting that I did attend, where we talked about the, uh, permissive tax exemption policy. Then we met again on July fourteenth, where we adopted the, uh, permissive tax exemption policy. And it was a September mid-fifteenth meeting, thank you, Counselor Shukin.
Mayor Little?
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think it's important to point out that the whole discussion regarding permissive tax exemptions and who we are given um, tax exemptions to started in September of twenty twenty-three and there was a motion put forward by Counselor Gray uh, to investigate that. And, and that is a motion that, uh, has carried through. We've asked the CFO, uh, to give us reports on our financial position. Uh, we discussed specifically the, uh, permissive tax exemptions on June thirtieth. Uh, we discussed them again in July fourteenth and then we discussed them in September to say that we, this is a surprise. It's, we, we have discussed it at, at three different meetings. Um, the, uh, and another point is that, um, we received a report from our CFO, um, outlining that in his opinion, it, it wasn't a financial burden for the groups, um, outlined in the permissive tax exemption to pay the other levies, so we've, we voted, uh, to provide the municipal tax portion, the levies that, the municipal taxes, and I thought that was fair because that would be, uh, the, we speak on behalf of the taxpayers of, of Michozen. What I didn't think was fair was that the rest of the taxpayers in Michozen would pick up the tab for the other levies such as CRD, uh, the library, the West River Parks and Recreation, the school taxes. Um, and so that is the portion that we've, that we've said we will ask them to pay. There is a possibility that they could come back to the grant and aid process, which I think would actually be more transparent. Because we would see their financial statements, uh, some of them are audited financial statements and we would see, um, if they're saying they can't afford the three thousand or the eight thousand dollar bill, um, we would see their financial statements, um, and maybe that would help us understand more fully whatever wasn't included in the financial statements that they gave the CFO. Um, because the permissive tax exemptions are examined every year. It's not a given that they're, you're given it for a lifetime. It's for, for that every year. And so I think, um, every one of those, um, organizations will have the ability to come back to grant an aid and plead their case for that other portion of the taxes that is not the municipal taxes, but the other levies. Thank you.
Counselor Shuka.
Thank you, Counselor Epp. Um, I'm going to vote against this motion. Um, Counselor Gray's mentioned procedural fairness and a number of procedural matters. But we would not be armed to hold such a meeting tonight. As, as Mayor Little mentioned, we've had significant discussion about this and significant opportunity to have discussion about it. Um, I recognize that Counselor, Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Gray were, had to recuse themselves. Um, I, I will say that Counselor Gray is pretty, uh, quick in his feet in terms of uh, procedural matters and it would have been interesting at that time if Counselor Gray had asked if we could break up the various, um, items to vote on, so he could have been present, same with Counselor Donaldson. Um, but the one thing, I, I, I'm just going to go back to this again. We have voted to provide ninety-seven thousand dollars of tax exemptions to these seven groups. And that is a change that's come from awareness of what is actually in the permissive tax exemptions. And I'm, I have not heard anybody say to me, um, from the general public that they were aware of how much money was going out every year for permissive tax exemptions. We very much support these groups and we are doing that in a tangible way with ninety-seven thousand dollars in tax support going out. Um, as Mayor Little said, there is another opportunity to provide funds through the grant and aid process. And I, I'm, I'm going to be supportive of that and specifically trying to see if we can look more closely at how that program supports the local groups this year. So again, I, I will not be supporting the, uh, the motion.
Thank you, I find it, uh, this is all really ironic because council has been, ever since it's, uh, got elected, we've just been absolutely battered by people about taxes and non-increasing taxes. And there's, and a lot of people that are in this room. And, uh, and so when the CFO brought up this, this, um, you know, the figures about this and we could realize that we could give residents, you know, a two to three percent decrease in their taxes, I naively thought people would be happy. It's definitely a little bit out there, so, um, you, you know, I just feel like you just can't have everything. And this council is faced, um, with unprecedented rising costs on, on so many levels that are non-negotiable. And that's just without even the, you know, the costs that have been rising in the municipality. So, uh, we have to do something, I think, uh, the budget talks are going to be quite scary because, um, we don't really have much to do but raise taxes to try to pay for this stuff. So anyway, um, I won't be supporting this motion, I, I am sorry, it's caused such upset. Um, but I, I think, uh, you know, for now, and maybe this will change a year from now, but I think for now it is the right thing to do. Counselor Donaldson.
Thank you for your comments. Um, in the application that is, is, uh, looks like it's renewed application, I don't recall seeing this before. Um, the, um, it's my understanding why Grant and Aid, you would provide your finances and the CFO did report on that in his, uh, report from what I've seen. Um, so that was, uh, an awareness and there was a matrix in that pack, package as well. Similarly to what we've done in Grant and Aid, um, this past year. And yet we went back and, uh, voted on that grant and aid like we've always done, so we completely ignored the work that went into revising it. The grant and aid that comes up in the spring is only five thousand dollars. We're talking substantially more, so for these groups to come, there's not money there. So to say to come back to that, uh, is very misleading. Um, as far as, um, notice to these groups, I was not aware until this, uh, until we've got over sixty-five letters. Um, in, uh, for us to reconsider this, that there was no notice to the groups that it would be split off, so, um, that's also, um, I think that would have been, um, respectful had we prepared that and that certainly wasn't oversight on our part.
Mayor Little? Yeah, I, I think we have the tools to be able to increase the grant and aid commensurate with the other, um, with the, the portions for those, uh, other levies. I think that, that we have that ability as a tool, as a council to increase the, the grant and aid. Um, so, um, I don't, I don't think that, that is misleading, so we do have that ability. Um, for sure, the, uh, the CFO did tell us that the organizations had the money uh, to cover the cost, it wouldn't be an overburden for them. He didn't actually give us the figures, as I remember, uh, what exactly was their financial, uh, their, their revenue, for instance, uh, minus their expenses. So I think that would be great to, to see that information at, um, at a future council meeting. Um, regarding, uh, comments about, uh, Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Gray accusing themselves. Um, and, uh, the accusations that we somehow bundled this together so that they weren't able to vote. Uh, we, we did it the way we had done it in past years. Um, and, um, I think that is, is not very polite to our staff to suggest that they would do such a thing. If you watched the tape, I had just introduced the item and the two counselors, uh, um, submitted their, um, conflict of interest and it's not up to me as mayor or up to me as the chair to dispute that or to try and get them, to try to have a discussion at that point about their conflict of interest. It's not the wrong time to do that. Um, but it certainly wasn't done intentionally to, uh, prevent people from discussing. As I mentioned, uh, we, uh, started talking about this, uh, with the notice of motion from Counselor Gray, September eleventh, twenty twenty-three. Then we discussed it June thirtieth, uh, in, in July and then in September. So there was ample time outside of the council meeting, uh, to, if you had huge reservations. And I honestly didn't hear any reservations at the table about the suggestions from the CFO about splitting up the, the tax, I didn't hear that. Um, and, and I will watch the tapes again to see if somebody brought that up. But I'm, I'm quite sure there wasn't outstanding concerns about that. Um, and so, um, I, I, I just thought I would correct that misinformation.
Um, thank you, we are going to have, I, we'll be asking, uh, Mr. Kriek, uh, to share a few, um, notes with us that he, he has, we were speaking with earlier today, so, um, he will, um, make his comments after public participation. Uh, any more discussion on this? Counselor Shukin?
Yeah, thank you, again, I'm, I'm going to just restate, I, I can't support the motion. Um, I, I did want to pick up on a comment that you had made, Counselor Epp, about the burden in front of this administration. And we have to consider, again, we have granted ninety-seven thousand dollars in tax relief. But the other things that we have to think about in terms of moving ahead with district business is consider, in twenty twenty-four, we injected eighty thousand dollars into the school to maintain its operations. Um, we provide grants to other organizations, for example, the seniors information resource center receives fifteen thousand dollars and, and annual grant. The community house on top of the tax relief it gets also receives five thousand dollars. And then there's another ten thousand dollars that we set aside from a chosen day as well. Um, I will recall that at the September fifteenth meeting, we had no fewer than three organizations come to council seeking money, all of whom were highly worthy. So we're being asked always to support community and nonprofit, and very often we do deliver on those, so, thank you.
We also have five thousand dollars in the budget every year for, to support the community hall. Uh, Counselor, anybody else, any more discussion or Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, the, the reason I would support this is giving notice to these organizations which do exemplary work and there is a huge ripple effect whether you go to church or you use the halls or, or, um, help with feeding little birdies at Wild Arc. Um, the, I, I suspect that if we're going to cut back on them, then we'll cut back on all the other services as well without notice. What I'm suggesting or supporting with, um, this motion is that we pause this year and reconsider it. And it's not, not because I was at the table for some meetings and not for other meetings. It's more that there was lack of consultation, I believe, with, with these organizations. So they have budgets that they probably not saw this coming, I don't know. Um, similarly, as we haven't had our budget yet, just see where we're going to go. We've got some major projects, uh, coming up, some multimillion dollars. And so, you know, we're going to have to really, uh, tighten up our bootstraps and reconsider um, some of the wish lists and things, and then there's things, yes, we don't have choices for. And, uh, some of those, uh, options we've been given by the CFO is to, um, not from him personally, but as research has shown, maybe we opt down on some of our contracts. So start whittling away all these different things, um, not having library, not having recreational services, um, putting more burden on churches and halls and, um, other, um, organizations that do benefit, um, the betterment of the whole community. There are, um, if we step back and do none of those things, are, are, what are we actually doing for our community? Not just here in Michozen, but regionally. We don't have any health and wellness, we're not investing in that. Um, I, I, I struggle with that, especially when I'm sitting on two of the boards that are being questioned. Um, and yet I've been working hard to promote those different organizations. We have fitness now in Michozen, we have library services that are coming to educate people in Michozen. Um, we can strip it all away and then go back home and just do nothing and not be a community. With things being really, uh, stressed in, um, the world, the province, or our region, people get a lot of joy out of volunteering and probably more will come together and do more volunteering. But, uh, to, to add more strain to that, I, I just think that if we paused and reevaluate, um, our own budget of the ninety-seven thousand and, or the other half of it and where that's going and what stressors we're going to put on that, um, consultation, that would have been, uh, respectful with these organizations.
Counselor Gray?
I guess simply put, I don't, um, favor austerity-type policies. It seems to me we have the budget ahead of us. We've had some notion discussing the fire hall that, um, money will be tight and will, um, potentially go into debt. Um, I would just prefer that we look at our priorities both in spending and priorities if we're going to be cutting and then comparing across different items and deciding where we might, um, add money and remove money. This is the first item that came across our desk, uh, since we heard about some financial, um, issues and so, so, uh, we made some cuts. And I'd rather get a look at the whole, um, picture and, and then work from there. I'm, um, I agree with Counselor Donaldson, a pause would be appropriate. Um, these organizations, some of them have had a tax exempt status since the inception of Michozen forty years ago. It's not an emergency to cut their budgets. It's, it's more of a long-term question, how are we doing it? And I prefer to engage with the groups and with the community on the topic.
Okay, I'm going to call the question, uh, all in favor? Opposed? That's, um, that'd be opposed.
So the last chance for tax exemptions tonight, so here's a letter from Counselor, um, Donaldson and myself, Mayor Little, under section twelve point six of the community charter. And we're asking that you hold a meeting, a special meeting tonight, um, to, um, make the, um, bylaw deadline for tax exemptions. I think we need to listen to the people, it's over to you now.
Okay, uh, well, I'll read this out.
Point, point of order, I, I think, have we not, I think we've voted on the, the proposal for the special meeting?
Yes, I think we did. Uh, through the chair, if I may? You have voted on the amendment to the motion, now you have to vote on approval of the agenda.
So, so with this, we would still require to, uh, give, um, notice, which we haven't done. Um, I think that if, obviously you two have had this planned, um, it would have been at least polite uh, to give us, uh, warning ahead of time and so that we could have, um, at least thought about it. I could have asked, uh, for guidance from our deputy corporate officer and our CAO who's away this week. Um, uh, anyways, I, I, um, I won't, uh, uh, grant a, um, a special council meeting this, this evening without notice. The reason why we give notice is not only notice for, uh, the other counselors that weren't in on your, your scheme, but also, um, notice to the public as well.
I'll just say, I'd send you an email requesting that we have a second, uh, special meeting and you provided no response to that. Um, I think the point here this evening is I thought the motion would pass, given the procedural circumstance we find ourselves in, it hasn't passed. It's now up to you as a mayor, you're the only person who can call a special meeting at this point.
Uh, through the chair, we are under statutory obligation to give notice if we were to reconsider our, um, our, uh, motion that we had, um, approved in, in September. Um, I was told by our deputy corporate officer that we need a minimum of two weeks, so we won't have enough time uh, to meet that October thirty-first permissive tax exemption, um, deadline. Uh, perhaps through the chair, if I could ask the deputy corporate officer about that?
Uh, through the, through the chair to the committee.
Through the through the chair to the committee. Under section two two seven and ninety four of the charter for permissive tax exemption bylaws, we must give statutory notice. So that means two consecutive weeks in a newspaper advising that council's considering the bylaws. We are so close to, I don't even know if we would be able to provide notice. We may be able to in the in the Times Colonist and then again in the Goldstream Gazette. However, I would want to seek legal advice on that because otherwise the bylaws could be challenged. I honestly I I feel that that it's it's we're too close to the deadline now at this point. But I would like to seek legal on that if that's what the committee wants to do.
Okay, well, the motion on the table is to have a special council meeting after this meeting. Is that correct?
No, the motion was to amend the agenda. So now if you want to call a question on just approval of the agenda.
Okay, I see. All right.
Counselor, move approval of the agenda.
Moved by Counselor Shukin, seconded by Mayor Little. All in favor? All right, moving on. Our first presentation of the evening is Dr. Jennifer Tynan and Yocan Moore on the aerial spraying to fight the spongy moth. Thank you.
Hello, let's see if we can get this set up. I love that you have a municipal cat. Very exciting. I'm Jennifer Tynan. I'm here on behalf of Communities United for Clean Air, which is a local grassroots initiative aimed to stop aerial pesticide spraying in B C. It goes by Kafka for ease of time. Wait, I point this over. Okay, here we go. I apologize for my lingering laryngitis. It sounds like I'm not the only one who's dealing with that. So for those of you who are unfamiliar with urban aerial pesticide spraying in British Columbia, it began in the nineteen seventies for the spongy moth formerly known as the gypsy moth. They use an agent called four A forty eight B, which is a mixture of a bacteria called Bacillus thuringiensis and eighty six percent undisclosed proprietary ingredients. The aerial application occurs by crop dusting airplanes in the early morning over houses, waterways, schools, hospitals, and daycares. There are generally three to five applications per treatment zone. Sorry for my sniffles, too. Public opposition has occurred since the eighties with occasional successful attempts to delay or stop the spraying in various communities. Urban aerial pesticide spraying is not permitted in many European and Scandinavian countries. So when I first heard about this about ten years ago, I'm not from here, so I was a bit shocked. And I thought, let me look into this. I looked first at the governmental information, which was very reassuring. As a scientist, I should say, I'm here as a citizen and a mother predominantly, but I'm also a physician. As a disclaimer, I'm not giving any health advice. My area of study is not insects or pesticides. But as a scientist, my next step, as most would be, was a literature review on the compound being sprayed. And what I found was alarming. Articles showing this bacteria to be anything but harmless show and there are some of the titles here. If anybody in the audience or at the table is interested in this specific articles, I would be happy to provide them. Articles showing persistence of this bacteria far beyond the spray window showing effect on mammalian cells and lung tissue. Some of these we'll come back to. I'm pointing the wrong way. We're coming here. Thanks for your patience. So here's the one referring to mammalian cells. So the government literature presents that it only affects moths. And sometimes they mention other winged insects, but definitely not mammalian cells. Also studies showing lung inflammation after exposure. So I noticed there was a pattern of the most published scientists in this field. I'm not an expert, so I reached out to them and I said, can you help me learn more about this? And I was lucky to connect with a PhD microbiologist in Norway who's an advisor to their government. And when he heard that we're spraying this bacteria over our cities in Canada, he was in disbelief. They considered this practice decades ago in Norway and decided bar none not to proceed. And they have not developed an issue with spongy moths in Norway. So he did his PhD in this very specific area, which is very confusing. He sequenced the genome of this bacillus during his studies at Cambridge. Why I'm telling you this is they found recently that its genome is the same as a larger group of bacteria known as B. serious, which I realize is kind of funny, B. serious, just in the drive here. The reason that's important is the mountain of evidence behind B. serious is massive. It is a known pathogenic bacteria, pathogenic meaning disease causing in humans, most commonly diarrhea, which can be life threatening. So even if you look at the specific literature on the bacteria, there are concerns. But when you find out it's identical to this larger group, it gets even more concerning. So we've been appealing this spray for years now and Dr. Granham has provided expert opinions and letters supporting us. He is not the only international expert that is trying to help. Here are some of some excerpts from his reports. This is where he's saying that this bacteria is now known to be the same as a larger group of bacteria. Here is another one where he is saying he would never stay in a city that he knew was being sprayed with this. Leave it there for a second. He is happy to communicate directly with anyone who is interested in more information. So we took a deep dive on the bacteria, which can be exciting or excruciating, depending on your perspective. I've certainly found it excruciating at times, but the issue was much bigger than this. First of all, it the spray compound is the bacteria and eighty six percent undisclosed proprietary ingredients. So what can we guess those are? The company won't tell us. But there was a study in nineteen ninety nine at U B C which took air samples following the spray and found many volatile organic compounds. These are compounds like toluene, benzene, and ethanol, which are known to be respiratory irritants and carcinogenic. The government recommends staying indoors to protect from the spraying if you are concerned. This U B C study found that spray concentrations indoors three hours after the spray were higher than concentrations outdoors. I find that concerning. So we've been appealing this for years. We had we were able to stop one of the sprays over Victoria General Hospital in two thousand twenty two. During the appeal process, we realized that the process is moot because there isn't enough time for it to be formally heard from the time the permit's issued to when the spray begins. So we wasted a lot of time and money trying to appeal something that is unappealable. This takes us to twenty twenty four. Kafka started as a small group in Victoria, which rapidly expanded across the province and now has petitions with over five thousand people signing in opposition. In twenty twenty four, awareness in Kelowna was high and the school board took a stand. They were going to perform decontamination procedures of their school grounds to wash surfaces to lower the exposure to children. And then the West Bank First Nation appealed the permit. Spraying in Kelowna in twenty twenty four was canceled. This was groundbreaking. It did proceed elsewhere in the province. This brings us to twenty twenty five, this year. No trapping results were reported on the government website and there was no spraying anywhere in the province for the first year since twenty sixteen, which was a huge relief. So where does that take us? There's one other study I'd like to mention. The Capital Regional District in the island did a study in nineteen ninety nine, a health surveillance study looking at this specific practice. And they recommended after nineteen ninety nine that if it were to continue, multidisciplinary health monitoring would be necessary with a plan well in place far ahead of the first spray with entrenched communication systems between health regions to report adverse effects and survey the public. Now, as you're probably guessing, this is not happening. There is no surveillance. There is a phone hotline. And yet spraying has continued since nineteen ninety nine unchecked. So what can we do? We need your help. We have municipalities who have taken a stand to say we don't want our citizens or our land sprayed with this pesticide. Michozen has some of the most beautiful land, properties, organic farms that I've seen. You've been a leadership in environmental protection and awareness, and I applaud you for that. You know, you have a cosmetic pesticide policy, which is wonderful. I am hoping that you want to be a part of groundbreaking change to put a stop to this practice for good. That being said, I'm not here to convince you of anything, so don't worry. I want to spark meaningful conversation, discussion, thought provoking scientific articles for you to derive your own conclusions, which I support whatever that is. I do want to point out, I welcome the government coming with their perspective. We are in a short timeframe to make change in that as of December, the spray plans will proceed unchecked. They are unappealable, as I've mentioned. If municipalities take a stand before the next one to two months, we have a chance to protect people, land, and animals in Michozen, and that would be really exciting. Thank you so much for your time and for having us here. I am beyond grateful. I do believe in cleaner air, land, and water for all of us, impressed to be in keeping with international best practices in pesticide use. And now we have Dr. Moore for more exciting information.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. First of all, I would like to congratulate Dr. Tynan for her success. The spongy moth spraying, gypsy moth spraying was a thorn in my side for twenty five years and I had hoped that it would stop. And I was not able to achieve it by conferring with other naturalists. But Dr. Tynan was successful by getting the whole province behind her. So I want to basically make four points. Oh, God. Four points. First of all, spongy moths are rare and therefore innocuous. Secondly, four A forty eight B is a broad spectrum pesticide that is anything but specific to spongy moths. And four A forty eight B has therefore a very detrimental effect on our already compromised biodiversity. And hence, the use of a devastating insecticide against an innocuous rare agent should cease. I want to go in a little bit more detail on each of these points. Spongy moths are so rare in British Columbia in the area that a network of naturalists, which has maintained a website of their observations for something like thirty years. It's this invert alert website. It contains tens of thousands of observations of moss, butterflies and other invertebrates, but not a single record of spongy moths. Apparently, they are occasionally caught in pheromone baited traps put out by the Ministry of Forests. But even the Ministry of Forests concedes that there have not been any defoliations recorded in British Columbia. So they are rare and innocuous here. As to four A forty eight B, it is anything but a specific spongy moth, but specific to spongy moths. There's a lot of misleading publications around. The Ministry of Forests states it only affects limantia moth caterpillars, that's spongy moth caterpillars, after they ingest it. That's correct. But in the in the Times Colonist, that turns into it only affects spongy moth caterpillars and is specific to their digestive system. That is wrong. The spec sheet for four A forty eight B states proudly that more than thirty pest species are susceptible. And there is another sentence in the manufacturer's information which translates into the fact that all lepidoptera, that is all butterflies and moths, which in their larva stage feed on vegetation, are exterminated. And that became very, oh, God. That became very clear in nineteen ninety nine when our farm here in Michozen was dusted. Within a very short time, all our formerly abundant butterflies like skippers or pine whites disappeared. The pine whites are a case in point. They used to be abundant, but now are rare. There is a publication by a guy by the name of Fletcher from nineteen oh one which states in August, the dead butterflies may be seen in vast numbers floating on the sea around Vancouver Island or thrown up along the beach in windrows, sometimes an inch or two in depth. We have about four hundred, two hundred kilometers of beaches between the mouth of the Cowatton River and the mouth of the Wando Fuga River. If we assume that the the windrows between these two hundred kilometers can be condensed into a small space. For instance, one kilo, yeah, one kilometer, one one meter wide and one inch thick, that would translate into that would translate into thirty billion white pine whites. And these would fill a cube of almost fourteen meters wide, deep, and high. That was nineteen hundred. In the nineteen seventies, a friend of mine went through went through Cathedral Grove and experienced them, quote, like a blizzard. Now, if we had assumed that those were ten thousand butterflies, they would fit into a cube of about ten centimeters, so a lot less. And fifty years later, now I have been waiting for three years to see the first one in in twenty twenty five. In this invert alert record, there was only one entry end of July this summer until Michozen Day, because on Michozen Day, I went out to Matheson Lake and I saw a couple up in the trees. And that was also entered into invert alert, even though I could not record them. Anyway. There's a phenomenal reduction in the numbers of just one species, and that is certainly that is parallel by a reduction in the variety of species. And that is therefore a sign of how seriously compromised our biodiversity is already. So it does not make any sense to me, given the general loss of biodiversity, to risk all lepidoptera on top of that by fighting a rare harmless by fighting a rare, harmless culprit, the spongy moth. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone at the table have questions? Yes, Counselor Gray.
Not a question so much, but just thanks to the two presenters. It's very informative. I wonder, oh, I did have one question. In twenty-twenty-six, are we expecting spraying? I think at Meas, we heard maybe not. Jennifer's just coming behind you there.
So the spray plans are generally announced the end of December or early January. The trapping results are usually posted in the fall. The last year, they were not. And then, once the spray plans are announced, which can be anywhere in B.C., the permit applications are submitted, and it's too late to appeal. So, yes, it's possible, very possible.
And through the chairs, does the province then seek the opinion of the district within which spraying is occurring?
So this part is a little bit fascinating. Yes, it does come past each municipal council. And in Kelowna and Cranbrook, municipalities did take a stand and did write letters when they were targeted as part of the informal appeal, not the formal environmental appeal board. But we did find that there is just a presumed sign-off. Because I thought it was a discussion for potential informed consent, but it is, this is happening, sign-off because it's happening, is the spirit behind it, from my understanding.
Thank you. And then, just so folks know, our plan from our council resolution was that we would hear from Dr. Moore and Dr. Tynan tonight, and then a representative of the provincial government who run the spray program will come another evening and address this. And then, it will find its way into agenda for a discussion, depending on the wishes of the mayor.
Counselor Gray, sorry.
Do I speak? And so, I was just, thank you for your presentations, both of you. I just have a question. So, since there was a hiatus in spraying in twenty-twenty-five, so there was only spraying in twenty-twenty-four, would the absence of spraying for twelve months, one would assume that you would see an uptick in the population of spongy moths? If they are present in our population? Although Dr. Moore has said that they're a very rare and innocuous species, so I'm just wondering, given that there wasn't any spraying, surely somebody would have seen them? Or identified at least one?
It's a very logical comment. I agree with you. Given the withholding of trapping results for twenty-twenty-four, it's difficult, I've tried to interpret trends myself. The numbers we're talking that trigger spraying are just handfuls to begin with in each area, not high numbers. So until we receive the specific trapping results to see, was there a change? But Salt Spring Island managed to stop the spraying a number of years ago, and there was not an increase for many years following the stopping of that spray. And in Norway, as I mentioned, which has a similar climate to here, the moths have never taken off unchecked. And like Dr. Moore mentioned, we've never had a defoliation event in B.C. on record, so. So I guess we'll see, and it will be interesting to look at their results and compare those with local naturalists as well. And then, through the chair.
Could I also comment on that? The question is, of course, why are there spraying in the first place for almost forty years now? And I think the fear is that they get established, but there's no sign that they get established here. They are established somewhere in the east, in Ontario and further east. And I think the pictures that they show are all pictures taken from the east somewhere. But what apparently is happening is that the Americans refuse to import British Columbia Christmas trees and lumber unless they are sure that there are no spongy moths imported along. And I think it's a purely political game that is being played here.
The other thing we should probably have mentioned, and I don't think either of us did, is there are non-toxic alternatives to trap any if we do find them. They can be manually removed or mass-trapped, which is something the government has done in the past successfully. Also, the egg masses can be killed with things like ice water, which I personally would be comfortable with being exposed to, so.
Very little, sorry before. And the second question that I had, when you were talking about the toluene in one of the reviews that you mentioned, I didn't quite catch it. Was the toluene and the alcohol or the ethanol, was that used as an additive to carry the actual pesticide? Or was that, are you referring to another spraying? Thank you.
It's so wonderful that you're actually paying attention. I'm excited. Yes, it's because we are not given the specific ingredients. The air sampling study after found it, yes, as an additive with the bacteria. The eighty-six percent of undisclosed portion of 4A-48B would be, and there's a long list of volatile organic compounds. I just listed some that might sort of ring a bell in our ears. So, yes, part of what's being sprayed.
Counselor Shukin.
Through you, Counselor App. Dr. Moore and Dr. Tynan. Tynan, thank you very, thank you very much for your work and your focus on this. Really, sorry, basic question. Is there any other type of spraying for insects that goes on similar to what spraying for spongy moth is when it does happen?
Really good question. Not urban aerial spraying most commonly. There are some other insects which you can find on the government of B.C. website that this year, they sprayed over some areas on the mainland using 4A-48B for a different insect. I'd have to double-check which one it was. They do have a list of insects that they watch for. But this is the one that's been annual since the seventies over cities. Yeah, for the moth.
Well, I think that's the main point. It shouldn't be done over cities. It is a different thing if there are square kilometers of crops which are endangered.
Thank you. Are there any more questions? Thank you very much for your presentation. It was very informative. I'm sure we'd all heard of, you know, gypsy moths or spongy moths, but never really thought about all the damage that the spraying could do, so thank you. Okay, our second presentation tonight is from the Michozen Arts and Cultural Centre Association.
Good evening. Ah, boy, you're gonna have to switch gears here. You're gonna have to change your, this is a whole new topic. That was very interesting. Good evening, Betty Heldrich. Speaking to you as Vice President of the Michozen Arts and Cultural Centre Association. I'm sorry if I'm a bit raspy tonight, but this is my job and I'm gonna speak anyway. So I will start our short presentation by introducing the current board from our most recent, newest members to the more familiar names. Directors, as I call your names, please stand and stay standing during the introduction, okay? We are pleased to have these dedicated volunteers on the MACA Board. Gwen Nolan. I think they're all clustered over there, yeah. Jessica Vino. Charmaine Welch. Gil Nash and Chris Van de Water. As well as, there's a very active member at large, Wendy Chin. But Wendy's not here tonight. Thank you all for your enthusiasm and your willingness. These individuals, each in their own way, bring a facet of genuine Michozen culture to our community. And they are very, very good at running an association. Counsel, you may recall from last year that we had MACA's studio tenants introduce themselves and make brief comments. It proved to be very positive and well-received. This year, in the interest of time, we will shorten our presentations slightly. You all have a printed copy of the two thousand twenty-five, twenty-twenty-five president's report from the AGM in July. So there's no need to repeat that document at this time. But if you have any questions, we'll certainly be here to answer and give them more information. Tonight, Chris will ring the official message up to date. Lots has happened since July. During the talk, a slideshow will be playing in the background. These are images of some of the artwork, which we have presented free to the public in the Point of View hallway gallery over the past year. Keep in mind that each image represents part of a full, full-blown curated exhibition. Jay, can you see these, can you see these slides? So with no further ado, I will now turn over to a volunteer that everyone is very familiar with, our president, MACA president, Chris Van de Water. Come on, Chris, get up here.
Thanks, Betty. I'm Chris Van de Water, president of Michozen Arts and Cultural Centre Association. And please avail yourself of the wonderful slideshow. It's very calming. Don't have to all watch me. I didn't write a speech for this year. The other three or four years, I wrote some rah 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 speeches. But this year, I'm just gonna wing it because I tried to write a speech, but I felt it was too, too confining. So I'm just gonna speak till you guys tell me to get lost. So what's culture anyways? What is culture? As a representative of a cultural association, I have to think about this. So I came to the conclusion that it's really hard to describe our culture here in Michozen because we're inside the culture and it's hard to see. It's easy for us to visualize a culture in Japan or Europe. I mean, you know, automatically visions come to mind of all the other cultures, even Oregonians. So I think it's akin to, "What's the hardest person you ever had to try to know?" question. So it's yourself. You might think you know yourself really, really well. Most people think they know themselves really well, but other people think, you know, they might think something completely different. They might think, oh, that's not the way it is. I saw an interview from David Foster a couple nights ago, and somehow the interviewer got him on to David Foster's personality. And he said, "Yeah, I'm, I'm, I know, I know I'm a bit arrogant." And why not? You know, everybody knows David Foster. He's a perfect bitch, and he's one of my heroes. But, so he said, and I was watching some of the, my early videos from the studio, probably when he was doing Hill Street Blues or something. And I said, "But I was just astounded by the amount of arrogance and cockiness that I showed." So there you go. See, he lived within himself. He didn't realize that it is like that. And I think the same with our cultural association, that it's hard to describe. But all of us are, contribute to the culture of Michozen. And everybody, the culture is everywhere. So that's what we do. We try to embody the culture by having public events, like the Christmas market and festivals and other things to help along the culture of Michozen. So that part's okay. Want to talk a little bit about our lease, which is ending at the end of the year. And we have, we just are finishing, I believe, a four- or five-year lease. We've had great terms where we paid, I think, ten or twelve thousand dollars a year in carrying costs. So I personally was expecting an increase, but the district came to us and I was quite surprised because they're talking an increase of around fifty thousand dollars a year, plus what we're already paying, which we'd have to close the doors. We can't do that. On the bright side, we've been in some discussions and so we're hoping that we can bring it down to where the tenants can afford an increase. There's been some good advice from our C.A.O. that we can follow. Hopefully, we'll bring it to a conclusion where it's not gonna break the bank for the tenants. It's important to have a cultural association at this point in time for Michozen. I was here in the fifties. I went to school in the very same building for four years. And back then, it was all working-class people. It was, everybody, everybody was young and working. And there was no thought to any sort of culture. We were all scratching for a living. I was a kid, but all our parents were. But now it's completely different. Now we're a suburb of Victoria. I know we're cloaking ourselves and being rural. I mean, we're a farming community. And but, you know, we're affluent. All our roads are paved, right to the very last square inch. What does that tell you? So we're kind of a rural community, I guess, but it's, it's, we don't have any debt. And so, as a result, our taxes are quite low. And now, all the professionals are moving out here. There's lots of professionals out here. It's a very affluent community. And so I think it's, we've been, had the Arts and Cultural Centre there for about, well, since twenty-ten at least. And I think it's important at this time in Michozen's history to have a Arts and Cultural Centre. If you've been watching all the pictures on the rotating display up there, we've helped so many people. In the last three or four years, our association has gained regional recognition, where people come out here from town and we're upheld as a model that other associations can follow. Me and the rest of the board, we work really hard at this. I would venture to say that we put in more volunteer hours than all of your other associations put together. I think that altogether, we put in at least two thousand. I think that altogether, we put in at least two thousand hours a year in volunteer hours. So that's, I guess, you know, it's volunteer, but should count for some, I guess. And so I'm, I'm beseeching the mayor and council to change their mindset and to come to us with a degree of understanding because we are under your ass. So my Christmas market, we're having one this year. And I've got a whole bunch of like one-by-two yellow teeters of various lengths. So I'm gonna make a nice trellis, a series of trellises and hook them together with one-by-twos and put lights on them. So that this year, for the first time, people are gonna be able to find a gym without asking all the vendors that are outside. Where's the gym? Is this it? What's going on here? So I'm gonna do that as more volunteer time, but I think it's gonna be very successful in attracting the hordes that have come to our Christmas markets, to the gym. So there, oh, we just missed it. We have hanging right now in the gallery of a seven-hundred-and-fifty-year-old ink rainbowing from a stump from the Walgreens Valley. It's hanging there. It's artwork. And if you have a chance to go and see it, it's, it's really a powerful piece. We're apolitical in MACA, so we're not involving any politics with this particular piece. But it stands on its own as an art piece very strongly. And we're proud to have it. And so what else is I gonna run by you? Anything I'm missing? Uh, let's see. There was, oh, wait, I had some notes. I can barely read them. Oh, here's a little thing. When a bird is alive, it feeds on ants. When the bird dies, the ants feed on the bird. The simple truth shown us how life and circumstances keep changing. No one stays on top forever and no one stays on the bottom forever. And yeah, Stacy, Stacy, my daughter, she rented the gym last year from, Stephanie was in charge with her phone and stuff. And it went very smoothly, Stephanie. Yeah, yeah, yeah. She's always down there. And but this year, Stephanie, I mean, Stacy rented the gym again through the online calendar. And but there was a little requirement this time. Anybody that rents a gym has to have insurance. So Stacy, she's thought, I better phone her and see what kind of insurance. So she phones the district up and the answer was, I'm sorry, we're not allowed to give out any information. It's just too funny. So another, another rumor I heard is that this down here and and down here is that you've dubbed the complex over there the White Elephant. And I was thinking, well, you know, that'd be a great name for the center, the White Elephant. It's iconic. It's catchy. It's could mean a lot. It's a good name. You should make a motion tonight and just do it. So does that give you an idea where we're coming from and where we're traveling? There was one more thing. It's about that obstruction in the drainpipe now. Every winter, when there's really heavy rains, day or night, I have to be there to monitor the drain that's outside the back door of Debbie Bernier's front studio there. And I watch the water come up and I watch the rain come down. Then I go home for a couple of hours, come back, see if the water's coming up. It can't, there's a little bit of water that gets past the obstruction, but in great rains, it's, I have to get my little pump and put it into something, drain it away and monitor, monitor, monitor. And while I'm monitoring, you know, where's the mayor and council? Where's the puller? Why am I doing this? It's volunteer. I don't know. I'm tired of doing it. Am I supposed to charge like, I think, well, maybe I have to charge, you know, like, come and monitor it? I don't know. I don't want to do it anymore. How about, how about getting the obstruction cleared out of the drain? I've only put it in my speech for the last three or four years. I think it's time to move on this. And this is kind of understanding that I'm hoping that mayor and council can extend to us. So thank you very much for your time. And I'm sure that we'll have a beneficial relationship for many years to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee, are there any questions for the MACA president, Councilor Shukin?
I wonder if Ms. Hildreth might join, and all of you, Chris, too. Just sorry. Yeah, yeah, just, just two questions if I could. Mr. Van De Water, thanks very much and thanks for your dedication. Quick overview of your thoughts about the state of the building on the MACA side? How, how is the building?
Building's falling apart. It's, you know, it's over a hundred and twenty-five years old. And that's all deciding. We paid it to society this year on credit. So it's basically paid. That's all we decided on. I nailed it on. It was nailed to the finish here. It's like, it's common with push the siding back. And it'll be okay for a while longer, but you know, these things need attention eventually. It's like a homeowner has to maintain their place. I was gonna say something else, too. This might be important down the road was we have, as MACA, we're so busy that we've had to hire a part-time administrator. And I know that we've forwarded this concept to the district where we could perhaps save the district some money and share an administrator that could be on-site, either part-time or full-time. I can't see running that center remotely. I mean, Community House has had a, an administrative manager there since day one and right on-site. And they've only got one room. We've got twelve rooms plus the dealless over there. It just can't be done remotely. I, I'm telling you this because it's true. And I think that MACA, although we don't want to get involved too much, I think we can assist with managerial capacity, helping you out and so that it, it may be on a contractual basis where it's not gonna cost the district any money.
Chris, you're talking about the whole plant, right? The whole facility?
So some to consider, I guess.
Okay. Thank you very much. I do want to apologize about the obstruction in the, we've, we've heard about it for many years. I, I brought it back to staff. I'm gonna remind them again. From the discussion I heard, it might be a little bit more difficult than just a snake being sent through, but I'm gonna let them again.
Oh, it has to be dug up.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I heard as well. So there has been past discussion about renaming the big building known as the school. And I have to say that for me, this comes up again and again because the school doesn't describe really anything. Is it the new school, the old school? Is this school the historic school? I've actually seen on two occasions now, people describing going to someplace at the school, but having to identify it is next to mile zero.
Exactly.
Yeah. So I, I guess I wanted to get your opinion, not, not a name, but is the name a change, something your supporter would see valuable?
Is it what?
Would you support a name change? And would you see it as valuable to marketing school or?
Well, since we don't have a name, it wouldn't really be a name change, but a name would be good. I'm just presenting the White Elephant. I think it's a good name, but you know, you might want to use its name. I hope it's a normal name, but might not be. But a name is important.
Thanks. Any other questions? Councilor Donaldson?
Thank you. Thank you for the slideshow and the information, especially in the package. A couple of things. So last year, there wasn't a makers market and there, you make quite a bit of money at this. I think last year was because the district was encouraging fees to be charged for tables. Is that correct? And will that be this year?
Well, no, there wasn't makers market last year. But we asked to have the rental fees waived because we weren't prepared. We hadn't, we didn't know at the time what exactly the charges were gonna be. This year, we're gonna do a one-day market. And that's based on the fact that we know exactly what the charges are gonna be. It's been decided and we've embraced that. Okay?
Yeah, no, that's good to know. So through the chair, we have just two more things. With the Festivus, the location has been out in the front in the parking lot. And when I was reading through something in our package tonight that Councilor Shukin was helping with parking, I think, maybe on the grassy field. Is that correct? I had mentioned it once before to one of the board members at the grounds group meeting about having maybe the band or presentations over in the tarmac area. There is a plug-in. I discovered that on the weekend in the cage area for amplifiers and stuff like that. So people could actually be in the grassy area. So therefore, you would actually have appropriate designated parking. Is that something that you would consider as a more, you know, you would draw a lot more people. They could put their blankets out and everything on, on the grass, that sort of thing, and tents and whatnot?
Actually, that's what we had planned originally to do this year. And we were gonna do it in conjunction with the Healthy Communities Advisory Select Committee. But things didn't work out too well. There was misunderstanding. And so we had to peel it back. It's, it's a lot bigger of, it's a bigger venue and it's gonna be a bigger project, a bigger event.
Yeah. So you were talking about having the main entryway go in by the case area. Is that what you were saying?
No, I'm just talking like, I think you had your stage like out the front of the MACA building, which is the parking area. Yeah, so just moving it over to the other side where the tarmac is, where the classrooms are, so that you can actually face the field where people could actually, it's, you know, it's fenced in. It's safer for people to come all about if you had tents and you have your music. And then the parking be for parking, like the actual designated area for parking.
Yeah, we actually try to keep Festivus down to a dull roar and just to have it in a small area where it's cozy. So the music that we choose isn't that loud. And it fits in good with the other attractions that we have.
Yeah, I'm just more concerned because we keep hearing there's issues with parking. The fact that it's up high enough and then it, you know, there's sort of a grassy knoll that goes down to the field is like a natural stage. Anyways, so good to know that there's been some thought on that. It's my last thing, and Betty, you'll remember this many years ago, over twenty-five years ago. We used to have MISA in, in Machozen and world-renowned, I believe, or it was very, just what Chris was saying about attracting people from afar and this recognition, acknowledgement we're getting for our arts. I know MISA's still out there in the east or somewhere. It's not in Machozen, but at the time, we also did something called MASP. It was Machozen Arts School for Kids. West Shore Parks and Recreation is interested. So if it's something that MACA is interested in doing, Bobby Neal was involved then, is still, she'd be a person to connect with. They would need at least six months of events. Most put it out in our, you guys, not. That is something for us to consider as well as an activity through there, if that falls within your purview.
Sure, sure. That's, that's, that's interesting. And also, last month, we got an email from MISA. They're looking for office space. They're somewhere downtown right now and they want to come back out to Machozen. MISA, Machozen International Summer School of the Arts, right? They're at Pearson, but is their office at, yeah? They are, right? So they have been in touch. Which is a good sign. That's right. That's right. So we are still in touch with MISA and that's a good thing, yeah.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any more questions or, Councilor Gray?
Just to say thanks for all the work you guys do over there. It's pretty impressive. The, I was wondering about two issues. Well, one, we will, we can ask the CEO for an update on the, on the question of the lease arrangements and learn what's going on. But the other thing was the mention in the documents about a platform lift. And maybe that's a question for Councilor Shukin. Is that something that we've been discussing with, with MACA?
We cancel our, our stairlift offer because of our financial uncertainty. So we're here until we find out where we stand.
Thank you.
Great. Thanks. Thanks very much. Appreciate all your efforts.
I wonder if ArtPod is gonna be one of the people next in line. I wonder if we can follow one.
I, I don't think that's, that's on the agenda. Was that, was that part of your, was that part of your? Well, we are just opening public participation now. So if you'd like to get up, you're certainly welcome. We have, and there you are.
That's what I was doing.
Yeah. So you have four minutes. We do have little lights on there, so. There's a warming. And we just need your name and address, please.
I'm Mehmet Burnett and we have a place out in Woodley Gill, 1190 Woodley Gill in Machozen. I've been part of the Machozen community for over twenty-four years. I'm the current president of Machozen Art Pod. I wanted to take a moment to tell you just a bit about us because I think there's a bit of confusion. For the past six years, Machozen Art Pod, housed in the Machozen Arts and Culture Center, has been the heart of the visual arts in Machozen. What began in 2019 with a handful of members is now a nonprofit collective of fourteen working artists who together donate a total of more than fifty-one hundred volunteer hours every year to keep Machozen Art Pod alive. We have no paid staff, no guaranteed municipal funding. And Art Pod has still built a vibrant hub that draws over fifty-five hundred physical gallery visitors every year. We host six juried and curated exhibitions every year. We offer weekly drop-in studios, often in the upstairs studio space in MACA, workshops, usually monthly and youth programs. And we also pay local artists as juror facilitators and exhibitors. In 2024 alone, we had two-hundred-and-ten artists submitting work to our juried shows and we exhibited two-hundred-and-twenty-eight works and forty-four artists were paid through Art Pod for their services. Our reach is extended beyond that because we participate in community events such as Canada Day, which is Machozen Community, which is Festivus, sorry, and Machozen Community Day and the recent Harvest Festival last Saturday. We run programs in conjunction with Rocky Point Bird Observatory and the, and the Machozen Foundation, as well as providing art education and information to the community through our social media posts, our free Art Pod online newsletter and regular ads and submissions to the Muse. We all, we do all of this on a shoestring. Our annual budget is thirty-one thousand. It's funded by our own artist member dues, commissions, art commissions, and modest project grants. Every cent that we raise goes back towards the gallery rental, gallery renovations and improvements, and our own community programming. In comparison, neighboring municipalities provide rent-free buildings and operating budgets for their art groups. In comparison, neighboring municipalities provide rent-free buildings and operating budgets for their art groups. Art Pod strives and thrives because of our volunteer artist members' commitment and we have terrific community support. On the fact, uh, why do we matter? Why do arts matter, I guess? We feel strongly that arts are not optional. They are as essential to community health as parks, recreation and libraries. In fact, the West Shore Feasibility Study in two thousand twenty two identified a critical shortage of arts and culture opportunities in our region. Art Pod continues to address this gap at no cost to the district beyond reduced rent in the Machosen Arts and Culture Centre. So you may be wondering why we're here. Well, lease changes could existentially jeopardize our ability to operate. And the current confusion and uncertainty is hindering and distracting us from pursuing interesting and novel programming and reaching people with our art forward message. Does Machosen really want to lose the only fully functioning nonprofit artist-run gallery they have? We are a unique cultural space that brings people together across generations, backgrounds and abilities. And we urge council to recognize Art Pod as a source of pride for Machosen and to support our continued tendency. In partnership, Art Pod can remain a thriving place where residents and visitors can come to learn, create and connect through art, strengthening the fabric of our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, is it my turn? Okay. I'm Irene Ives and I'm the secretary treasurer of Art Pod. I live in Callwood, but I spend half of my life in Machosen uh as I am one of the people that contribute to those five thousand uh volunteer hours a year. I just need to, I'm a little confused. Uh, we were encouraged to come out tonight because of the lease agreement concerns and the costs involved. I'm hearing that there is some agreement made, but I just need as secretary and treasurer to say that we pay twelve thousand dollars a year and five thousand hours of volunteer work to operate something that is one of the most public forward-facing endeavors in Machosen. We can't afford to subsidize anymore. What's going on? We pay over eight thousand dollars in rent and we pay over three thousand dollars a year to use the DIY room studio upstairs for community programming. And we will not be able to stay and exist in Machosen if we have to continue to supplement what we do for Machosen and the and the West Shore region. So I really encourage you, I know economy of scale, you folks are in a terrible position and you're having discussions about who deserves the next kidney machine. I understand that, but we're tired of making arts and culture be the icing on the cake. We think we are the center of the cake. And we're tired of having to advocate to be allowed to do what we pay to do and we volunteer to do out of the passion that we bring to the arts and to this community. So we are really asking that whatever conversations you're having with between Maka and the CFO and the folks at this table, that you really look at the added value of what people that don't even reside in Machosen are bringing to your community. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Ed Bennington. Uh, I live at forty eight sixty Tavain Road. Uh, I am a member of Saint Mary's Parish Council, a member of the Monday Morning Work Group that works at Heritage Church every Monday throughout the year, even holidays. Usually there's some of us there. I'm here because of the presumptive tax exemption issue that has been raised. I respectfully submit that the council has not been forthcoming and transparent enough to have public input. As one of the organizations affected, we only found out at the eleventh hour what the effect will be on us. Um, I have tried to speak to the mayor, phoned her four times and left messages, but did not get a return call. I wish to have a meeting to clear up some misinformation that was in the information package that I was made aware of. Uh, misinformation refers to the information that was given about the financial viability of the church, the uh things has us listed as the Anglican Diocese of B C, the Anglican Diocese owns the property. Uh, by the way, they are not financially very well off neither, but they do not carry the expenses of the properties in Machosen. The parish of Saint Mary, of Saint Mary's does that. So that uh we have been going year to year on a skeleton sort of financial track. And uh the effects of even a reduced tax to fifteen thousand uh is in the most likelihood will render us insolvent within a year or two. Um, which is vastly concerning to us. Uh, we would do everything not to have that happen. However, it doesn't look very hopeful, given the kind of what seems to be the attitude uh coming from the council towards all of the groups that are affected. I would just like to make three quick points. That um Saint Mary's Church, which is maintained and kept operational by the parish, is the is an emergency evacuation center for the district of Machosen. The um Emergency Social Services will set up there in the case of emergency and operate out of that location. Um, for the past thirty five years, parish of Saint Mary's has provided the financial support and secured significant investments to uh for Saint Mary's Heritage Church. The Anglican Foundation provided fifteen thousand dollar grant, which allowed us to put a skim seal under the church to prevent the further erosion by powder post beetle. And there's a ramping built and a lot of volunteer labor from the community and the church has been involved in that. The um other significant fact is that over seventy years, the parish of Saint Mary's provided the preschool society access to the hall until it was no longer habitable. At no rental cost essentially, a one dollar a year credit and supported that group. So uh, we uh feel very burdened by what uh is coming down the thing and it is quite likely that the hundred and fifty three history of Saint Mary's Church could end. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor Little?
Uh, Mr. Bennington, uh, the C O and I have an appointment next Thursday or Friday with Mr. Brendan Nielsen uh with the Archdiocese, so that that um he reached out to us and and we've got that appointment next week.
Patty Whitehouse, Rocky Point Road. Uh, very quickly, uh, I want to uh express my support for the recommendations from Stan Orchard regarding bullfrog control in Machosen. Uh, bullfrog eradication is impossible in this area without a concerted coordinated effort from all municipalities where bullfrogs exist, which is most of them. Um, however, uh Stan Orchard's efforts funded by Machosen are being effective in controlling the uh the bullfrogs in Machosen. They are voracious predators that if not controlled can wipe out a lot of the amphibians and birds and so on in in small lakes and and ponds. Um, and add disease elements to the water and and all the rest of it. So uh just do what Stan says and we'll continue keeping those voracious predators under control. Oh, and they have no native predators here. They are occasionally predated upon by, I've seen um snakes and uh and something else, but they don't have any natural control predators here.
Thank you.
Uh, good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm sorry to kind of jump the line. Me and my husband are going to go because our children are here and it's past their past their bedtime. Uh, but both my husband and I feel this is a really, really important that we're both here to speak. Uh, my name is Judy Roper, six six one Pears Road. I am very upset with the recent tax decisions. And even more upset after listening to the beginning um of this meeting. Many of us pay for services we may never personally use, the library, recreation centers, schools and even the nine one one system. We all pay because we recognize that these services make our community safer, stronger and more connected. Permissive tax exemptions do the same thing. They are strategic partnerships. Through them, the nonprofits deliver essential community services at the fraction of cost the municipality would pay to do the same work. I'm a member of Saint Mary's, I'll speak directly to that. Our parking lot serves as a designated park and ride and overflow parking for Woody's Lagoon, Westmont, the Suk School District and public events such as Machosen Days. It also provides space for the film companies, which is good for the local economy. Countless of Machosen youth have learned to drive in the parking lot, which we provide for free. And I just think about my dad who's here. You know, when I was a teenager, you know, he taught me to, you know, drive there and also help me with my class for license in the parking lot. The church's green space is being entered into the Bilston Creek Conservation Corridor, protecting local habitat and supporting Machosen's environmental goals. Saint Mary's is a designated emergency evacuation shelter and emergency social services center for the district. It has been used by the district in this capacity. Saint Mary's is a gathering place that builds relationships across generations accessible to anybody in the community. Where children and families can spend time together in a safe, educational and caring environment. If Saint Mary's were forced to close, who would take on those roles and at what cost? That is the other set of calculations that has not been done. The municipality would face new expenses, securing a replacement emergency shelter, maintaining a conservation area, managing increased roadside wear from lost parking and finding ways to provide the safe community and youth programs we currently offer. On top of that, many local groups rely on Saint Mary's venue for their programs. Without it, they would struggle to find space and our community would lose lose yet another affordable place. The projected fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty three tax increase for Saint Mary's will put us in financial hardship that could mean a difference between survival and closure. And just kind of reiterating off of what Ed was saying, there was a misunderstanding that we'd actually be able to pay for this. We cannot. And that's true for many of our community's nonprofits, groups that support youth, seniors, animals, the environment and local families and even hearing from the odd part, odd Art Pod, um art stuff as well. This decision, well, well-intentioned, is incredibly short-sighted and unfair. Fairness must include collaboration. Nonprofits and the community members deserve to be part of this conversation before decisions on this scale take effect. Saint Mary's was not part of this decision. So tonight, I ask council to change their policy to at least give us another year. There is still time for you to do that, I believe, after all of the legal things are um looked at. This would give nonprofits time to plan, adapt and explore sustainable solutions together with the municipality. Machosen has always been known for its cooperation. I urge council to protect that spirit and to view our nonprofits not as costs but as partners that multiply the value of every tax dollar. Thank you for your time.
There we go. Okay. I'm sure you heard me anyway. Um, and I'm here to address the council that is so well-known as a council of three two votes. Congratulations for finding a way to get to a unanimous vote this time by finding an issue where you can remove two of the councillors so they can't take part. You may have already gathered that I am vehemently opposed to the decision to proceed with removal of tax exemptions from our nonprofits. The CFO's opinion that these organizations will have no difficulty paying these additional funds is fundamentally wrong. I'd like to know how you want about communicating with these organizations to ensure they would be able to shoulder this burden. When pondering this issue of the council's decision, I can't help but wonder at the long-term goals. By leveling, levying additional unaffordable costs on nonprofits who have no tangible additional means to pay, the inevitable result in some cases will be that these organizations are going to go out of business. What happens then? These nonprofits, in many cases, own large acreages and those will go up for sale. The land will be bought and developed, which is directly in line with Chief Financial Officer's comments when discussing the concept of taking a debt, taking on debt to build a new fire hall. To pay debt, he recommended adding population density. Seems possible that your decision to remove tax exemptions could be an attempt to drive future development with the aim of increasing future tax revenues in Machosen. All five of you sat in front of Machosen during the election and assured the residents that you would maintain a rural community and fight against developing this absolutely beautiful municipality. If this densification happens, you won't get to throw your hands up and say that you had nothing to do with this. I hope I'm wrong, but if I'm not, we, the residents, will know who broke their promises by allowing this to happen. I challenge you, prove me wrong.
Thank you.
Uh, Jane Hammond, Rocky Point Road, also a member of Saint Mary's. Uh, I um, it's hard to follow those few um amazing uh messages. Uh, I'm here to actually just uh read a letter that comes from the Reverend Lynn Mills from uh Saint Mary's. She unfortunately is ill tonight. So, uh, dear Mayor Little and Council, uh, and I apologize, there's a lot of re- repetition and what you've already heard, but I think I should read it anyway. I, from Lynn. I am writing on behalf of the parish council of Saint Mary's Anglican Church in in Machosen to oppose, no, sorry, to express our deep concern about council's proposal not to renew the permissive tax exemption for nonprofit organizations in the two thousand twenty six tax year. This change, if not reconsidered, will have severe financial implications for Saint Mary's. Got to read it on this. Eliminating our church's exemption would impose a unsustainable financial burden of fourteen thousand nine hundred and forty three dollars according to the the calculation, uh, or even more up to the thirty three thousand five hundred and twenty nine. If the grant is not um coming through. This would be annually and jeopardizes Saint Mary's future. Saint Mary's is maintained entirely by its local congregation and receives no operational funding from the Anglican Church of Canada. Thus, any new tax obligation would fall solely on the small Machosen parish community. Saint Mary's has been an integral part of Machosen since eighteen seventy three. Beyond its religious role, Saint Mary's provides invaluable services to the communion, community. Our facilities serve as an emergency component for the district during crises and our parking lot is offered as a public park and ride. We also steward Machosen's historic cemetery and provide space for numerous community events and local groups. We are partnering with the Machosen Foundation in creating a guided walk in the Bilston Creek Conservation Corridor. These contributions form part of the essential rural infrastructure that makes Machosen special. Removing the exemption support undermines the infrastructure and contradicts Machosen's longstanding values. In light of these concerns, we respectfully and urgently request the council reconsider its decision. We ask that council direct staff to bring forward the two thousand twenty six P E T P P T E bylaw for readings and call a special council meeting before October thirty first to adopt it. Thank you very much for your attention in this urgent matter, and we remain hopeful for a resolution that ensures St. Mary can continue to serve the community." Thank you.
Thank you.
Anna Lovering, 3962 Olympic View Drive. And I'm just sort of speaking off the same thing, just here to oppose the tax exemption that's going through. I have minor, I've been using these services a lot. One of the big ones that I've used is Camp Thunderbird for my children. I've reached out to them specifically, and I'm just gonna read what they had to say on it. Because all of these ones, I think they're all, it's the same thing, it's the same story, even if within council, I think it's been talked about. It's obvious that within the community, it's been a shock to everybody. Even to the local community, there's a lot of concern about it just very recently. So I think there needs to be an extension on the talks of this before it goes through to have a lot of clarity and let people be more involved in the discussion. So from Camp Thunderbird, when I reached out to them, they were very concerned about it. And just part of it, they said, "It will definitely be very much harder for us to keep the center open. We run off a loss every year as it is. The exact amount of tax to be paid in 2026 is undetermined, but the Y will be paying more than other charities due to the size of our property." So they already run, and I knew that before, they don't, they run in a deficit anyhow, so any increase... I don't know how they would do it, but it would make sense that that cost goes back onto the people using the services. So the children using those camps, they're the ones who are gonna be affected. I, my children did get to go to those camps. I come from a middle-class family. It was a real stretch for us to let them do that. So any increase, it's just gonna wipe a whole demographic that allows children to use those services. That's the trickle-down effect of this. And I think a lot of that hasn't been considered, obviously, for the other organizations as well. So to just think how it's gonna affect the community, the SPCA, if they don't have the funding. With Wildarc, it's, they don't have the hours, they don't have the people, it's the animals that are suffering. The Machosen Hall, I don't know if Yvonne Decker is here, I'm just gonna read a little post that she put. "But the president of the Machosen Hall Society will be deeply impacted. We offer deep discounts for youth group rentals and an affordable place for jazzercise, badminton, birthdays, funerals, weddings, etc. If we raise our rates, we would potentially lose some group activities and further affect our income. We operate as a nonprofit for the community's benefit. Where do we make up this shortfall without impacting renters, the users of this community facility, our community? It definitely is a ripple effect not being considered." I think that's all. Sorry about my nerves. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Gary Lamb, 860 Hackmore Drive. What I wanted to raise to council night is the revamped traffic lines on Duke Road East. I'm not sure if any of the council members have driven that, but I drove it three times the other day just to make sure I had a true appreciation of what potentially has, as I see it, developed an unforeseen risk as a result of painting the lines to form a walking lane. If you, if you're driving along Duke, Duke Road East, and you hit the intersection of Albert Head Road, there's a rise there. And when you go over that rise, you hit the walking lane. You need to make an immediate veer to the left. Otherwise, you're gonna drive straight into that walking lane. Concerned I have is, you know, if at night or somebody is, you know, speeding and they come over that rise, and somebody happens to be at the top in that walking lane, unfortunately, I think it could be catastrophic. So I'm not sure who designed that, but it appears that it was not laid out properly. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Schukin.
Thank you, Counsel Epp. I was actually, I have been made aware of that, what Mr. Lamb is talking about around Albert Head Road. I was in touch with our Public Works Supervisor today, and he is gonna be back in touch with the line painting company, and we're gonna re, they are going to realign that, the walking shoulder. So if it is known and it is in the system right now, so.
Okay, great. Thank you. Is there anyone else for public participation? Might be good news.
Okay, sure. My name is Ray Zimmerman. I'm the Director of C2C Green Belt Society, and give large support in your community. I live in Victoria. The arts group, with their 5,000 hours of volunteer work, brought to mind another example. From 88 to 94, it took six years of research to take the Greater Victoria Water District to court to stop the commercial logging operation in the Greater Victoria Water District. The BCC Supreme Court voted in our favor. That six years of work was all volunteer, nobody got paid, not even the lawyers. So I would like to point out, how do you measure the economic consequences of such a decision? I'm making this little comment about Camp Thunderbird, because Camp Thunderbird is the hinge that connects the north part of the Green Belt to the southern part. If Camp Thunderbird decides to develop their lands, that's a break in that Green Belt. That's your backyard. And that, the thousands of hours that were expanded on this C2C Green Belt is also, it's difficult to measure. So it seems to me that your challenge is, how do you measure volunteer hours and get that into your spreadsheet so that it actually counts for something? Because right now, it seems like it doesn't count for anything. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Gray?
Yeah, just to counsel, I had an interesting experience. When elected to council, perhaps one of the first persons that phoned me was Ray Zimmerman. He said, "Whatever happens, make sure that Camp Thunderbird maintains its tax exemption." I said, "There's no way that'll change, Ray," and here we are today.
Okay, is there anyone else for public participation?
You'll have to forgive me. I didn't come with prepared statements, and I've written them tonight as I was sitting here listening. So let's see if I can actually read my own writing. Kiera Kahakawala, Perry Crossroad. "The only way residents of Machosen will benefit from your penalization of not-for-profit organizations by refusing to grant them a permitted tax exemption is if you actually reduce the 2026 tax increase by the same amount you've taken away from these community groups. Some organizations may have more ability to pay than others. These organizations did provide financials as requested to your CFO. They did not have pre-warning that there would be a change in policy. This discussion on policy should have included all of council. If nothing else, Mayor Little, as Chair of council, you should have separated the discussion from policy and properties, especially as you knew members of your council would recuse themselves on certain properties to be discussed. There is a way to allow the permissive tax exemption for 2026 to follow through. It will take quick work from staff to facilitate the required statutory requirements, but it is possible at this time. But first, it will take fortitude and humility from Mayor Little and Councillors Epp and Schukin."
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? Would you come back to the... Thank you. Anyone else?
Afternoon or evening, Darren Brown, Grace Line Road. Like Echo Gary Lamb's comments about the risk of Duke Road, the increased risk to health and safety on there by the changes that have been made, quite concerning. I don't know how much we've spent on, you know, frivolous amenities like this that have to be reconsidered and redone after a rushed implementation. Counsel Epp, I heard you say it's ironic that, you know, people are asking to be responsible with our dollars. What I've heard from every person that's ever come up here is that we were asking you guys to be responsible with our precious tax dollars and be meaningful with implementation of certain things with them. Tearing apart the fabric of the community is not a great innovative savings. It's quite concerning. So more importantly, though, it's hard to go more important than that, but standing up at this podium is not easy. For most residents, it is intimidating. It takes courage to stand here and face the people who make decisions that shape our lives. When council responds with interruptions, procedural ambushes, and shouting people down, it doesn't just silence a voice, it sends a chilling message to anyone else who might speak or might have spoken next. So I think that's unacceptable in a democratic chamber. And I want to address something specific. The word ignorant, that word is not an insult. It doesn't mean stupid or lesser. It simply means that this, this is the dictionary definition, Counsel Schukin, lacking knowledge or information about a particular subject, right? And we're all ignorant of something or other from time to time. That's fine. It's not a weakness. It's a chance to learn. So when members of council, and I'm speaking directly to you here, Mr. Schukin, respond to that word with hostility or public scolding, it doesn't demonstrate strength, it demonstrates insecurity. Leadership isn't threatened by words like ignorant. Leadership listens, reflects, and grows from there. And leadership, Mayor Little, is not just about the words you speak. It's also about the behavior you allow and enable. When one councillor consistently shuts down people and the chair allows that to happen, that's not strong leadership. So this council has already shown us what happens when leadership doesn't listen. People feel dismissed, they lose faith, and once that trust is broken, it doesn't just apply to one issue, it spreads. So yeah, if you mishandle meaningful community issues, why should anyone trust how you handle the fire hall? Trust isn't built on press release or ribbon cutting. It's built right here, in a room like this, when ordinary people step up to speak and are treated with dignity. We don't need perfection, right? But we need respect. We need courage, and we need leadership that listens, especially when it's uncomfortable. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? There's plenty of time.
Yeah, okay. I hadn't planned on saying anything either, because I thought that there would be people that would be wanting to speak more as a first time, but... There's just, this is really bothering me, the way you guys are going about this. Every one of those councils, with the exception of this one, understood that there's two columns to the ledger. There's the cost to the taxpayer, and there's the savings to the taxpayer that the charities provide. And there's multitude of studies that show that the savings to the taxpayer far outweigh the cost to the taxpayer. And you've heard of it, you've heard it tonight, from the arts people, from the church, from all of these other places. You have not calculated at all the other side of the ledger. And that leads to something that Counselor Donaldson alluded to, and that is the regional aspect of this. I spent twenty, nearly twenty-five years as a regional director representing this community, constantly trying to convince the other municipalities that we pull our own weight. And Counselor Schukin, I mean, you're always talking about fairness and equity. Where is the fairness and equity to say, "All you other municipalities, yeah, you all gotta support all of these charitable organizations, but we don't. We need money, so we're gonna not do that." "Well, but the rest of you all have to." There's no fairness or equity there. And the other municipalities are going to be, they're gonna think a lot less of Machosen than they do now. And frankly, I mean, I find that appalling. And Counselor, pardon me, Mayor Little, there is time for you to rectify this. This is on you. You can change this, change and protect not only the finances of this community, but also the reputation of this community regionally. Show some leadership.
Thank you. All right, anyone else wish to speak? Are you speaking or leaving? Thank you. Okay, CFO Creek, I'd ask you to come up and give us a few more words on the tax exemption issue.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So I guess everything about permissive tax exemptions, all that good stuff. Everybody who did apply provided three years of financial statements, basically 2024, 2023, 2022. And when I broke down that table showing fiscal need for some and not for others, it was based on their net income from most recent year that I saw, which was 2024, and then calculating, can they cover the taxes that would be left, right? So I won't go through all of them. Looks like we'll probably have a report, and I'll have a table showing all of them for each different organization, but we'll start at the least, goes to the church. So if they had, yeah, so if the church had paid the other taxing authorities in 2025, based on their income from 2024, they would have had a net income of seventeen hundred dollars. So yeah, very tiny amount, but still, if it was in their budget, though requiring any cuts or increased tithes. The highest one comes from the SPCA. So if they had actually paid the other taxing authorities their 2025 portion, they would have had a net income of 6.78 million. So it, there's a wide gamut here, and that's what we're kind of showing. And we'll either be on the council meeting for the 27th or November 6th, third of those days, just showing everybody's where they're sitting. So it wasn't based on feel or anything. I just took their financial statements that they provided. Some of them were audited, some of them were just on QuickBooks. But that's how, that was determined where they had fiscal need or not, based on, everybody still had a positive net income after paying the other taxing authorities. Everybody still had money in their reserves to do whatever with building maintenance or anything like that.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we'll just move on with our meeting. We started off with the adoption of the special community of the whole meeting of June 5th.
Move adoption.
Moved by Counsel Schukin, seconded by Counselor, are you seconding, are you?
I can second. I had a question.
Okay, seconded by Counsel Gray.
Yeah, crops up here and in another minutes. On the bottom of page, it's hard to see, well, the second page of the committee, the whole, the very bottom.
It's hard to see. Well, the second page of the committee, the whole, the very bottom. And so I, I guess, um, it's a misunderstanding, but I don't think it's true. Uh, it says here, the Fire Hall Steering Committee, the committee's recommendation for new construction. I don't think we've ever seen a recommendation from the Fire Hall Steering Committee on this question. So it's okay that it's in the minutes because maybe that was said, but there's no record of any recommendations from the Fire Hall Steering Committee on the issue of construction. I'll point it out when we come to it later.
All right.
I don't know if we change it or I don't know what was said. I just saw it there and I thought, oh, there wasn't a recommendation.
We have to check with her. Ms. Hanson.
We can re-listen to the video and um bring them forward again at the next, uh, committee of the whole for adoption, if you like.
Thank you.
Or, yeah, okay, whatever the committee would like.
Right, thank you.
Councillor Epp. Well, I'm, I'm having trouble seeing the page here.
Yeah, I can't find it either, so I don't know what you're talking about.
It's uh, second page of the committee of the whole meeting, Thursday, June fifth. And ju- very, very bottom there. And the wording is the committee's recommendation for new construction.
That was sprayed in Trump, but through the chair, that was the joint meeting with the Fire Hall Steering Committee?
I'm just wondering if this is really worth staff time to get clarification on that.
It's material in that the, you'll see it turn up somewhere else as well because I think we were on the impression sort of recommendations have been made, but they haven't been. So it's just a factual question and it might mislead people in understanding who said what.
All right, we'll just leave that one with staff then.
Yeah.
Uh, so I'll ask for a approval of those minutes. All in favor?
I guess I'll come back for approval another time. I think we heard from Ms. Hanson, they'll come back another time for approval.
Yeah, she obviously can't do it tonight. Um, all right, so adoption of the minutes of June ninth, committee of the whole.
Move adoption.
Uh, moved by councillor Gray, seconded by councillor Donaldson, all in favor. And the minutes of the special community planning committee meeting of June twenty-third. Moved by councillor Gray, seconded by Mayor Little, all in favor. And the special public works and protective services meeting of June twenty-sixth. Moved by councillor Shukin, seconded by Mayor Little. Okay, and then we have a receipt of minutes. Uh, we'll do this as a group. There is one note that the um September nineteenth Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee uh minutes are ac- actually are a repeat of the August ninth minutes. So the um uh staff is, is uh paired that on the website, so that their proper minutes are in the proper order. So, so with that, just ask for a ser- receipt, uh motion to receive the advisory select committee minutes of all the above, from below. Moved by councillor Shukin, seconded by councillor Donaldson, all in favor.
I'll just mention, you'll see the second um error on the me- um the environment committee, page forty-seven, the middle of the page. And it was just reporting out what so this, the smaller subcommittee of the Fire Hall Steering Committee recommended the endorsement option, but that's not, so we can deal with that when they, yes, meets again.
Cover that.
It's page of, page forty-seven, but I can speak to the committee about that when we meet.
All right, so the business arising, perhaps I can go to councillor Shukin on, on this. The recommendation from the Parks and Trails Advisory Select
Yeah.
Committee about donations to the community parks policy.
For sure. Thank you very much, councillor Epp. So in the past, we have had guidelines that are circulated about how to manage donation, um, donations of park benches typically and picnic tables. And these are typically on municipal grounds or on roadside trails, other locations as well. So what we have here now is an attempt to create a policy and give us clarity on those donations. And really quickly, I'll just walk you through what has been proposed. So I, I'm taking this on because it originated with P Task, who developed the guidelines. And then we were working with staff to develop a policy. And I would like to request support for the policy tonight. So um first of all, yeah, covers amenities like park benches and picnic tables, but there might also be some other items that are tied to memorializing the loved ones, so it remains open that way. Um, the purpose and guidelines are self-explanatory, but mainly to clarify where a bench or a table goes. It is up to council in terms of district lands, that the donation period is ten years. It can be renewed, but there is a time period around it as well. Um, and then again, guidelines around when, what happens when the donation item is installed. So the next section clarifies matters around price. So our previous guidelines were really specific around price and actually named a cost. But that cost has since gone way up. Um, and so what it, what the point is right now is it clarifies that the price of the item includes installation materials and coating, as well as a maintenance fee of twenty percent. So again, these things have gone up over time. I think the last bench that we talked about was about five thousand dollars. And um, again, very graciously donated, and I think there are two more that we have in the works. Um. So again, role of deposit. And, yeah. Next one is just clarification of the donation procedures. There, it outlines the role of the trails coordinator and the support we get from staff, and then of course, the role of council in approving. And final section is about, again, just clarifying that not every trail is available for um, a park bench, no matter how, and we, we've had a number of occasions where people have come saying that, you know, my, my um elderly parent used to walk in this trail every day, or my but, you know, we had one where the trail was named after their, their, their um forefathers or foremothers, whatever. Um, and we just don't have room. So again, it's being very clear about that the district has the approving authority over this, so. So if there let me know if there are questions, thoughts?
Councillor Donaldson?
Yeah, thank you. I, I really appreciate the work's gone into this and I'm most appreciative that you've gotten rid of the uh matrix with costs because it, it's going to change. So this may last a lot longer. I just was um also um liked the idea and I had read it in the minutes of uh one of your P Task meetings, um, reference to if the um family or the person is not, no longer wanting to maintain um, the said bench or whatever it is, table, that they have an option of taking the plaque back, which I thought was quite remarkable. Um, just a question, has there been any vandalism to plaques being taken off of these monuments?
Not that I've heard of. No, no.
I only ask because the uh Equestrians experienced that. There was two plaques and they were both stripped off. And so I was, got me thinking when I read this, it's great for them to be able to take that memento with them or to come back and see it all the time. So just, next time I'll have to look how well fastened they are. And maybe that was, maybe that was the thing, but we didn't see any burr screws or whatever it was fastened, the whole thing was fastened. Yeah, good to know. Thank you very much.
Thanks, and um, no, great observation, and that was a late addition uh that P Task had brought back to council as well.
Mayor Little?
Yeah, thank you through the chair. Thank you for this and the work that's been taken um towards this, this policy. I would only suggest that at the beginning, um, under donations to community parks, where it says groups to contribute gifts, I would put in brackets, uh, park benches and picnic tables, just so people are aware of what, what kind of gifts are acceptable. And my second comment is when the trees were illegally cut at Blaney Trail, there was a number of citizens who wanted to, to donate trees or have, or supply money uh for a tree to be bought for dedication to a certain individual. And so I think that since we are running out of spaces for the park benches, I think that would be a great uh gift to the, to the district um in memory of somebody. And, and of course, we wouldn't want to put a plaque on the tree, uh, but there could be a sort of a communal pla- plaque at the top of the park, which would name um uh some of the trees that are, are um planted in memory of people. So, so I think that, that it also could be a gift and that may resonate with a lot of people in our, our community.
Okay. So Mayor Little is, the suggestion is maybe in brackets, um, park benches, trees, tables, or park benches, tables, trees, et cetera? Just to.
Yes, through the chair, I think we could also have monetary donations uh to purchase uh trees.
Okay.
You know, because we don't want people showing up with a forty-foot tree, but, but um, yes, word it's some way. I mean, you're very good with wordsmithing, so um just leave that as an option.
Okay.
Um, I, I, there was one person who was wanting to contribute like up to five thousand dollars um at the time to uh plant some trees at the, the, the new, newly named Blaney Trail.
Okay.
Blaney Park, rather.
Great. I'll work with staff, Ms. Hanson probably to, to get that in there. So.
Councillor Donaldson?
Yes, thank you through the chair. Uh, councillor Shukin, we have talked about doing something like memorial trees. But do we have an identified type of tree? Or trees? Maybe we should have a future conversation about that and maybe consult with somebody like Katie Nelson, you know, for something that's more of a native planting or um fruit trees, that sort of thing. I could see that on municipal property that's ALR. Be in alignment with that.
Right, yeah.
I guess one thing that would concern me about the trees, I mean, it's a great idea, but, but who's gonna water them? And look after them. So does, if that becomes a, another job for uh public works? Because it would be pretty sad if somebody wanted a beautiful tree and then a year later, it's uh nothing but dead branches. Uh, so, and the other, other thing, I mean, I know this is the right way to do it, but I find it quite sad that after ten years, if there's no family able to contact, that those plaques will just, I don't know, go to recycling or the metal bin or something. It's just kind of sad that, that they're usually, you know, for people who've really contributed to the community or been a big part of the community and, and it seems to me that maybe there should, should be some option if, if um relatives can't be notified or take those plaques, just somewhere we could, we could put them up on the side of a building or something. I don't know, it just uh seems, but anyway, that was just a, just a thought when I read that, but otherwise, it's a, thank you very much for all the work in it. It's gonna be nice to have the, that, those issues refined.
Great.
Councillor Gray?
I don't have any questions. I'll vote in favor of the motion. I just want to say thanks to councillor Shukin and the, and the crew of, um, I guess P Task has worked on this a bit and, and to the staff who've put their energy into it. I like the idea of, of the trees and um adding that and, and the edits that the mayor suggested. And um, I think councillor Epp's given us some practical considerations, but perhaps those can be, be sorted and as long as the P Task group thinks it's reasonable.
Yeah, and to your point, councillor Epp, if, if, I think if there are notable citizens out there, there, there will be some knowledge of their presence in the community. And um my, my bet too is that even after the tenure period expires, there's likely to be a bit of a lag before action is taken. So, um, but yeah, the point would be to keep the plaque. But there's also an onus too on the owner to, you know, inform where they are.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we tried to balance duration with the fact that there might be other interest in the bench and all, and also cost as well, because there is a maintenance fee that goes along with these, so, yeah.
Mayor Little?
Yeah, regarding watering, um, there was uh one donor who had set up a memorial garden there and she was bringing in water on her back. Uh, so there was quite a bit of effort on uh behalf of, of the Parks and Trails and Katie Nelson and um, um, and I've forgotten her last name, um, helping us design that, the new uh Blaney Trail to bring, bring in pipe water. So there is, there are hoses that are donated, uh, from old hoses from the fire department there. And there is access to water. So there is an ability um to um to water the trees. And we, we were paying um some local kids a nominal fee to, to water some of the plants that were being done there. So I think it, 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 it could be, regarding the type of trees, of course, we wouldn't um accept any invasive trees, but uh that could be easily dealt with uh at the Parks and Trails.
Okay, well, I guess we did, did, we did make a motion, right? Or do we?
I would move that the committee recommend council adopt the new public po- works policy, W one hundred eight six, donation to community parks. And that public works policy, W one hundred, W one hundred point eight donations be, okay, sorry, and that public works policy, W one hundred point eight donations to the community parks be rescinded. And further that the Parks Donation Program guidelines for staff also be rescinded. So moved.
Second. Moved by councillor Shukin, seconded by Mayor Little. Uh, any more discussion on that?
I did, I just realized that in the discussion here, I missed the point and perhaps is here. But let's say the donated bench has lived ten years and the plaque comes off of it. Does the person who, say, puts a new plaque on pay the full cost or simply the cost of the plaque? Or how does that work? And I'm not meaning to get too complicated, I just is that part of this?
It's an interesting question.
Yeah, so okay, again, the line is the cost of the donated item may include installation materials, including graffiti coating for a park plaque, sorry, park furniture plaque and a maintenance fee of twenty percent of the material costs. Hmm, I, I don't, I don't know.
Maybe it's the twenty percent of whatever the ma- maintenance cost is.
Yeah, the maintenance.
Or if there's multiple plaques that might accumulate too.
Totally. So, so again, um, what I think is okay, so what, what I think the logic of this is, is that if you renewed and you were the person whose family is being memorialized, you would pay the twenty percent maintenance fee. And in reality, though, if someone is re- taking up that bench, you're not paying for installation. You're paying to keep the bench going. So, and I believe that there's a part in here where it talks about how staff will um, I think.
If I may, through the chair?
Thank you.
I I believe you're looking under record keeping, um, part three B, the master list and site availability, that clause.
With this clause, there is an attempt by staff, it's in the policy here, the um, to make contact with donors. I, I, I think in rea- reality, um, I mean, if we want to make a I, I think it's really clear with, if you, if you extend the period, you're paying the maintenance fee for sure. Yeah, so, yeah. I think we should keep it at that. Yeah. If we want to, ten years from now, and we'll all be sitting around this table, ten years from now, we can maybe update the policy if, if it's unclear, but uh it, it basically starts today. Starts always, sorry, as soon as council approves it.
Councillor Gray?
I have no problem approving the, the policy as it's written today. I'm just, um, it was as people were talking, I thought. What ha- what happened, so I hadn't thought of it before looking through it and um. So it I think it's fine to proceed and then maybe we could kick it back to P Task and just say, hey, there's this one other thing, any ideas? We don't need to rush this, it's just that someone might have a, or or even going home as we go home tonight, we'll think of of something to do, so. I I say get it done and then and then we can come back and revisit um as a new idea comes forward.
Um Mayor Little.
Yeah, I would just add in um councillor Shukin perhaps add a note in three H. Uh saying that that if um um, I don't know what you call it, the next. Family that takes over the beds, the responsible for the maintenance, and then I was just thinking. Isn't there room for more than one plaque on a bench? Could you keep that plaque and 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 put another plaque on it, there's lots of space, it's not gonna impede sitting on it.
Yeah.
Could they, could you consider that as well?
Yeah, and and we have um, there there is a bench in the works where there will be two plaques. And they've agreed to split the maintenance costs, so, yeah, so.
All right, so uh all in favor of this then?
Thank you.
All right, there's a, you have another recommendation there, roadside shoulder enhancement planning?
Sure, um this is an issue that appears to keep coming up. And even when I was an observer of council. I I felt I witnessed a number of times uh situations where road was, roads were gonna be paved. And either P Task or citizens came and said, couldn't you put a roadside trailer, couldn't you enhance the shoulder? And I actually remember making a note to myself that catch this in February because it might be something to look at, so. And then we have a paving project on uh Lindholm. And I will say that um certain Parks and Trails Committee was quite annoyed at me that I didn't bring it back to them. For consideration of a wider shoulder, so what we have put brought here is. It it's a reminder to us all essentially that we keep an eye on this and throw it, just remember to throw it back to P Task. And again, this will be the council liaison's job, but also, I mean, hopefully the table will be able to remind and think about this stuff. These the 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 roads that are subject to paving come to us in the capital budget. And so that's the time maybe when we can be reminded to bring it back to P Task for a possible consideration of a wider shoulder. So.
Well, I really appreciate this uh this because I've brought it up every year for the last seven. And never seemed to get very far with it, so I think having something actually written down might uh might get action. I do question the one, the one uh comment was but um advising the committee about. All upcoming roadworks, I think that needs to be a little more defined because that could be mowing grass. You know, it could be almost anything, I think maybe you need to stick to the shouldering or or something that's a little more. Because they're not gonna be getting in touch with the committee when they're going to mow grass or do regular maintenance or scrape the edges or. You know, things like that, so.
Good, good.
I think I think councillor Donaldson was next.
Thank, thank you, um councillor Shukin, I just had a question and actually now that councillor Epp has said something else, I'm wondering. Uh so we're talking about shouldering, are we talking about expanding the paving to make a light path? Or is it the shoulder beyond the tarmac uh for. A wider shoulder or possible trail and is, so that would be my first question, the second one was. This is always being understood, it's just lack of communication. Um and one of the biggest uh ones that I found um. That came became really clear where staff hadn't communicated to P Task was the uh area in front of Fermi Farm. And uh Public Works actually had consulted me, I was involved with uh M E S uh doing trail work at the time. And uh it was Eric Meredith, actually, he was saying, oh, so you know, we're gonna do this, and I said, oh, that's just great. And then the paving came along and there was new gravel put down and all of the work that Public Works had done was covered up. And so there was, you know, just another layer of gravel, it made everything narrower cause it's now higher and stuff like that, so. So where it says here on the second part and that council advised Parks and Trails. I think it's probably staff should advise Parks and Trails, so the communication. I'm I'm not sure why it says council. Because staff is gonna know more about when the paving contracts and schedules is happening, we will discuss, of course. The budget of paving or the schedule at the beginning of the year, but when it actually comes out that 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 they're there. Or when C R D is putting in water lines, those sorts of things, um just thinking this shorter period of time. One less voice involved, just go directly from staff to P Task. I don't know, I I just kinda question, should it be staff or should it be council? We would have already uh, you know.
Oh, sir.
I I think that there it's actually missing a word and it should be the council liaison. And it should be something like in order to give the council liaison to Parks and Trails, advise Parks and Trails. Of of all upcoming paving works, I get councillor Epp's point about roadworks, how about paving works? Road paving works?
Uh for the capital road resurfacing.
Okay, yeah.
Plan, maybe?
Capital road repaving plan. Road resurfacing plan, thank you.
Uh councillor Gray.
I think that the, I mean, fair enough that the council liaison would do this, but it seems to me that. The staff have got the documents, they can, you know, once they're approved, they go to the P Task to get on the next agenda. I'm just worried, as we said, I my notice to myself was, why, isn't this already happening, we talked about it a lot. Um so I would have just thought it's a it's a function, but I I know the um C E O is not here this evening, but. It would just become an automatic thing that occurs and then we're not relying on somebody to remember the date. As soon as it's available, we provide it and then it it should, from my point of view, it's not so much a council job, but the idea that. Um the C E O will know that something's going on and tell them, pass it along. I'm okay if you wanna leave it as it is, but I would have said it's a staff function at this point.
Well, I don't, I suspect it wouldn't happen that way, cause I I almost feel like what councillor Epp is saying. Maybe it's been left at the hands of staff who are just inundated often, but what if it was modified to say second. Provision here and that staff and or the appropriate council liaison. Advise the Parks and Trails Committee as soon as possible of all of the capital road resurfacing plan. So again, we've got staff and or the liaison, it's probably both. And um and then again, correct the words of like paving essentially.
Yeah, I think councillor Gray makes a good point because I think uh as council liaison for Public Works that I don't. Get informed about what they're doing, so I think that, you know, unless something changes, I guess, I think getting. Getting staff in there somewhere would be a really good thing because otherwise it basically is just the same, you could say that, which is what. We've said and and that means, but it never has, never actually happens.
Okay. So councillor Epp, are you suggesting? Go with councillor Gray's thing, just say.
I'd say staff advise the council liaison.
Well, we direct the C E O, so the C E O and then he can, or she can figure out who to give it to.
Just something, yeah.
Okay.
Just for accountability, if you say the C E O does that, then we, that's who we direct, we don't direct the staffs.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Um I again, I did an and or the appropriate council liaison advise, you you wanna strike that or?
Oh, sure, that's fine.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Just.
I I think we should do both, just.
Put it all in there, just cover all the bases.
My worry is that we don't know who's doing it, so if we wanna get it done, you name the person who's doing it, it's clear. And it doesn't happen, you can say, hey, that didn't happen, we need to get a process in place.
Okay, yeah, that there's some logic to that, I guess.
The C E O can always ask, hey, would you use that for me?
Yeah.
And that's. Cover that off.
Okay, why don't why don't we go with that?
Okay.
Okay, um I'll move that the committee recommend that council direct staff to consider roadside shoulder enhancement during the planning of annual roadwork. Or how about we, Tina, we say capital road resurfacing planning? As part of the district's commitment to support safe active transportation. And that the C E O advise the Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee as soon as possible of. The capital road resurfacing of upcoming works of as part of the capital road resurfacing plan. And that the Parks and Trails Advisory Select Committee be given an opportunity to provide input on shoulder enhancement opportunities as part of the forthcoming woodwork, so moved.
Right, any more discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
All right, I guess that's me. Uh so for my update, uh what's all down here, I'm gonna go over it, go over it all, just um. I thought the Public Works party about the seemingly increased amount of of garbage and refuge around was kind of illustrated last week when. Actually, it was my, it was my daughter that mentioned that there'd been these sort of buckets and and markers, uh pylons on the. Corner by on Rocky Point by Taylor Road and they'd been there for quite some time. And so I contacted Public Works and they said that actually it was, it was human refuge uh re- in the buckets. And so the company was supposed to be coming to pick it up, but didn't show they did eventually come, but it's just an example of what the Public Works crew. Has to deal with on the sides of our roads and why it's getting worse, I I don't really know, but but it's uh, it's too bad. Uh so we have heard about the lines on Duke Road, which I thought was kind of a really exciting thing that we've been. Trying to, you know, follow the B C Active Transportation Guide and get some of the road safety issues um, you know, covered in our in our community. And we certainly have been, have done some, um it was an engineered uh plan and and uh. So anyway, I'm glad that we heard that about the problems with it or you've heard about that and we will get that dealt with, but I think it will be. Nice to have uh that portion of road a little bit safer for for walkers and strollers and and cyclists. Um the other is we finally got the solar activated pedestrian crosswalk lights at Hans Helgason. So from I don't know how many years, maybe even a couple decades that uh people first started trying to get something done about that crosswalk. So it's taken quite a few years and a lot of money and in grants from vision safety and road safety. And I C B C that have uh covered all the flashing, the signs and the and the lights and the roadworks, so. You know, it's really exciting to actually see that, of course, I never heard from, after all the lobbying that we've had about that, but never heard from anybody except to say. Um why didn't we have an overhead flashing light? Um so uh as far as the seniors association, the big thing is the flu clinic coming up on November first at school. It'll go from eight A M to four P M. And they have all their regular programs going, they seem to be more all the time, bus trips to the Rocky Point Observatory and. Going to Royal Bay Park and the shopping and other of their programs they have going on, so they really are going concerned there. Uh the Healthy Communities Committee uh held a free movie night in September, uh unfortunately, it wasn't very well attended. So we had a lot of popcorn left over, uh and so it was, we had a bunch of short uh animated films. As well as a a really neat film on the on the Great Bear Rainforest, so you know, I guess it's just that there's too many. It's just so easy to access movies and everything else uh in your living room, I think that's probably part of it, but. I mean, it went it went well, like the the picture showed up really well on the on the gym wall there. Uh last Saturday, uh councillor Donaldson will know this than I do, but the the um Healthy Communities and the Metros and Growing Society. Got together in the rain um to hold a garden festival in open house, uh very apparently it was really quite well attended. Uh there's going to be a full report, which will be going on on the Healthy Community side, going to the Healthy Communities Committee meeting and then we'll be presenting. Presenting it at the next committee of the whole. Uh one thing, I don't have, don't have all of this written down, so one thing uh some of us did was go on a tour of the. Western Canada Marine Response um s- site at Beecher Bay and that so the building was open, it's huge building. And just all full of their supplies and people got to tour some of the boats, there was way more people that came than they expected, so it was really neat to see. It was a beautiful day that helped, um I was really lucky because uh given my prestigious position as a councillor. It was exciting, I got to go and tour the K J Gardener, the the big boat, they have the main big boat. It was just absolutely incredible to go up to the bridge, which is just packed full of three hundred and sixty degrees of computer. Equipment, uh they have eleven staff on there all the time, change uh about every month. They have a capability of of I think twenty one on there, it's really amazingly set up and one of the most notable things was. Well, they can go out in almost all kinds of weather and they have two massive engines and they're actually capable of towing. A fully loaded barge, a fully loaded oil barge tanker, so um you know, it's uh, it was, it was good, I mean. You know, nothing is perfect out there as far as if we ever get an oil spill, but it's sure nice to know that we have that close at hand anyway. Uh the Wonderful Performing Arts Center is having a an arts gala. Uh to try to promote, get support and hopefully funding for uh an art center, they've been working on this for decades. To try to get this, so the gala is a hundred and thirty dollars a ticket and there'd be all kinds of entertainment and uh. I think beverage ticket and food and snacks, so you know, it'll be a very entertaining evening, one of the highlights of their entertainment is these. These um performers on these massive stilts, um they're really quite uh quite amazing. Uh so, and we do have a note from the fire chief on what's been going on there. Yeah, I I did say brief, anyway, uh uh they're bringing on eight new recruits uh in November. It's a joint program with uh with Isu and Suk, they're applying for new grants uh this month uh for the. A O C and the E S S, E S S uh center and they have finished up on the portable emergency operations center trailer. Uh it's a commander unit, is that what you're calling? Oh, sorry, I can't read this, communications unit. So I'm sure there's a a lot more stuff going on, but we'll catch up next time. All right, so uh that would be my update. Yes, Mayor Little.
Yeah, um I just, I I think it's worth noting, um you sort of breezed over it, but. Uh the installation of the pedestrian activated crossing lights at Hans Helgason, it has been a couple decades that the parents at Hans Helgason. Have been asking for that crosswork, crosswalk and you have uh gone out and and um applied for these vision. Uh zero road safety grants and then also the crossing at the Galloping Goose at Kangaroo. And Rocky Point Road where the the sidewalk is aligned in a very safe position. As opposed to pedestrians riding across the street diagonally, I think is really great and those lights. But you can see them for for uh a couple of blocks, so I think, I think you deserve a round of applause.
Thank you, thank you, ma'am.
I I know you've been advocating not only this council but last council for those and and it'll go a long way for uh safe passage, so kudos to you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I I have a question, I I agree, I'm, I applaud you, especially with um those street crossings, the one at Glen Forest as well. Um I'm surprised how many people just zoom right through, but anyways, they are, uh people are getting better educated on that, it's super busy with those three lanes. Um but the school has been quite significant and I think that um I think everybody at the school probably. Um is more and more appreciative e- every single day, I've gone there a few times and I have to crawl through there, so it really is uh. Not that I did before, but I have a friend that lives right next there, so it's 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 great, I'm I'm really pleased that this has uh. It's been a long haul, but it's it's coming to fruition and I think it's doing great wonders. Um in regards to uh what Mr Lamb said earlier, um I didn't know that the painting had been done over on Duke Road. So um I saw something posted somewhere and it there was this thing, I'm gonna go and have a look, I was on my way back from. The market and uh and yeah, it came up really fast, so I'm just wondering uh for. I I realize there's probably gonna be some remediation, but sometimes when there's a change in um intersections or traffic, there'll be a sign. intersections or traffic, there'll be a sign posted for, well, it's a traffic pattern change, if we could have something like that. Uh, the other thing that I was thinking is there's these uh, signs that are black and um, orange and they're diagonal for when there's, you know, usually you see them on things like bridges, but if we had something like that to just sort of warn people that this is what's coming up. It, it does really hit, hit quite quickly, but um, certainly um, you've got to handle on what's gonna happen next, but uh, it was an observation, but certainly letting people know that there's a change. I don't go there that often, so I wouldn't have had a habit of going, but um, yeah, see people know we're coming over a little bit of a, a bump in the road or whatever there, that would be.
That's a, that's a good idea.
Yeah, just, just a, a, to let them know what's coming ahead, especially now that we're getting into the winter months and different daylight and fog and stuff.
Yeah, yeah, good idea. Uh, Counselor Gray?
Yeah, I'd, I'd, I wanted to ask a couple of questions, but the Duke Road East has come up. And I don't really want to talk about the merits of the project, but the process. And um, it sounds like, Mary Little, did you, did you know about the project? The line painting and that? Yeah, because three of you knew about the line painting, but two of us didn't know anything about it. And the project, all of the time that we've dealt with this, it's been on council's agenda. The need for the project, necessity for a survey, the survey cost approved, phase one approved, using whatever project money we put forward. July fourteenth that we approved phase three line painting was postponed. So I, I mean, I looked up the minutes there and it's, you know, the council discussion ended with by consent, further discussion on proposed recommendations was postponed for discussion at council. Then on August nineteenth, P T A S meets and resolves to recommend, to endorse a recommendation to council for travel line painting to support safer passage along Duke Road. We never received that recommendation and line painting went ahead. Um, I, I think the council should be informed about things. If we're, if something comes to the table for a decision by us, it has to come to us for a final decision. Um, I don't know the, the reasons why it proceeded, I wasn't involved. But it's like, the, the three people know, three council members know about it, two council members don't know about it. And I'm not sure how the decision was made. Was any attempt made to put it on the council agenda? Do our deliberations mean anything? Um, how is, you know, just thinking about accountability and transparency. I, again, the merits of the project are one thing, the process is what I'm not sure about. So I want to make a motion that the Committee of the Whole recommend that council direct the C A O to prepare flow chart for council with regard to council approved projects and expenditure controls. If someone doesn't second it, I'll mention, see what I'm talking about.
Well, second for discussion?
I think we need to better understand spending decisions to fill, fulfill our governance role. And I'm not wanting to criticize anybody here, particularly staff or council members. It's just, we're not following proper governance and processes. And this is good evidence of it. And I just think that we should um, do our role. And if the C A O could help us understand that, that's what the motion's about. C A O, could you please help us understand, I mean, we're involved in a project, how that works and how it should work in the future? So we don't need to go back over what happened. We're talking about going forward. Thank you.
Well, the C A O isn't here to respond, uh, but there was um, money left remaining in the line painting budget. So it was kind of a quick thing, because this is actually something not just that P T A S brought up this year. Uh, it was last year as well, that that part, that Public Works was going to do those lines and then said they wanted to have it engineered first, so it was engineered. And um, and there was money left over, so it had to be a fairly quick decision because they're only around for so long and the weather only holds for so long. But I think Counselor Shukin, you had.
Sure, I mean, I'll just, it's years ago that I suggested we move the lines rather than all the discussion we had about filling in ravines on either sides and all that. And at first it seemed that that was unpopular idea. Well, now it's been completed, but again, process.
Well, I don't know about it being unpopular, it wasn't with me, but anyway. Um, Counselor Shukin?
So, really quickly, as I understand it, the road painting, I get this from Mr. Creek. Uh, the completed budget, sorry, the budget at the time this project was underway was sixty-seven thousand with the total being, I think it was ninety-two thousand, something in that order, ninety thousand. This project cost twenty-two thousand. So it was actually pretty modest in terms of what we had previously been expecting. But the reason we, sorry, the reason Mr. Payette decided to go for it is because it was limited and we, we had to act very quickly to book the machine and get the weather window to, to do the painting. Um, and as you say, Counselor App, this work was actually scheduled to take place a number of years ago and it was, it was missed. So I, just as part of the normal budgeted line painting process, so.
Counselor Donaldson?
Uh, it's, it's, I'll be nothing to your, your update, but as we're talking about that, can you, i- is this related to the thirty-eight thousand we came to us before and I said opening it to uh, the budget time? Was that this project? Okay, so then my question is, because I've lost track, so, so bear with me. So we had phase one, phase two and phase three, so is this phase three?
The project has adapted as we go. And it's, it's unclear how much work will actually be done on the other two phases, but this would be generally considered phase three. But again, it is line painting. It's not a trail, it's not, um, yeah, so, yeah. I, I do want to hearken back to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, where we had forty-five people in this room. Everyone was concerned about traffic safety and w- uh, the ability of walking on that shoulder. And I didn't hear anybody objecting to putting safety implementations of some or safety measures in there. So by narrowing the road and widening the shoulder, you actually do achieve, it, it is a joint traffic calming method. Established and as I understand it, so.
Hey, Counselor Gray?
Yeah, the merits of the project aside, so the motion i- is that the, the, this committee recommend that council direct the C A O to prepare a flow chart for council with regard to council approved projects and expenditure controls, just so we're clear how it works so we can follow it in the future.
Uh, Mary Little?
Yeah, I was just uh, trying to recall and, and I think Counselor Rep, you can verify this, wasn't this in the last year's budget? It wasn't it, wasn't it planned, wasn't it approved, and then it didn't happen for some reason?
Certainly brought to the table. I can't uh, remember the, the details, but I know I was quite surprised when I drove down Duke Road after the line painting and found out it hadn't been done. And it turned out that was a decision of the um, Public Works Chief or somebody.
Okay, so then, so then the work that was just completed is really completing work that had been approved and presumably in the budget last year, but is not, we're not incurring further budget. It was money that was left over in the, in the budget, in the line painting budget.
Uh, yeah, from this year, yeah. Counselor Gray?
Yeah, that may be so. Um, the point is it came to council, um, I might get my dates wrong here, came to council um, on July fourteenth. The C A O could have spoken at that point and said, hey, we're doing this anyway, you guys, we'll take care of it. Uh, I'm just, just to understand how this works, would have been happy if that had come up that day and, and we got any approvals on the go. It's just confusing to be a council member where we're tackling these issues and hammer and tonguing them, and then suddenly they occur and you think, what? How'd that happen? We didn't ever talk about it again. After it was postponed for, for the discussion, after P T A S recommended to council, even an email note to say, hey, we, we're gonna proceed with this, it's, you know, some explanation, so we can deal with it.
I'm going to interrupt because we need to make a motion to continue past ten o'clock.
Thank you.
Set seconded by Mary Little. All in favor? Alright, I also think that we do live, leave um, most roadworks up to staff. So I think um, you know, I won't support this because I think it was a kind of a, something our C A O uh, had a opportunity and money in the budget for and made the decision to do it. So maybe it uh, wasn't a perfect, it wasn't a perfect procedure, but uh, I'm happy that it, that he did that and that it got done instead of having to wait another year, which is what we would have had to do. Uh, who is next?
Go ahead. Yeah, um, to the chair, I was just, I was just going to mention that is that we um, give direction, direction was given last year to the C A O uh, for, and he does um, operationally uh, guide this municipality. I think we have to give him some leeway, leeway, especially when he's trying to save money and take advantage of, of the line painting within this calendar year. Um, also, he's not here to defend himself or to, to explain, so I would, I would not uh, support this motion. Uh, but I think it would, were the, it um, reckons that we should have a conversation with him about it and I'm sure he'd be happy to have that conversation.
I used to have monthly meetings with the C A O and he's canceled those. Um, I think that it's just fair, I'm not talking about what happens. I say, I'm not trying to allocate blame, I'm saying going forward, could we not have, you know, just a flow sheet to show us how it works? You're concerned about the past, I'm talking about the future so that, so that we know and it won't be a surprise, we'll say, oh yeah, that's how it works.
Counselor Donaldson?
Yeah, um, I, I'm more, well, and I've, I've had some of my questions answered, just understanding the phases, of course, the budget. Um, because when a constituent says something, I'm like, oh, I didn't know. So it is a communication thing, whether it's a flow chart or, uh, we used to get weekly or biweekly reports and I know things are really busy, so I I don't expect anything, but when I get them, I'm always thrilled. Um, so I had no way of actually answering um, the, the queries, which is why I went and looked myself. And then, of course, Counselor Epp has answered and um, affirmed that, you know, we can probably do something to alert people and, you know, uh, people have mentioned it and, and now I understand the phases are kind of, but it would be nice actually to understand where we're at with the phase because people are asking that too, like what's this and what's that and where are we with money? Because, you know, budget's coming up and that sort of thing, just so we can um, be better prepared to answer some questions or field those questions maybe. Um, because we've gotten quite a bit done, I think, so that, that would be helpful. Thank you.
And I think we, we just have a different problem if three, three members of council know what's going on and two members don't. So I'm, it's a plea here to function like, I don't think councils are meant to function. And so we know what's going on, especially when something's been decided at our table or brought to our table. It doesn't then sort of disappear as this seem, one seems to have done.
Alright, we call uh, the question on Counselor Gray's motion. All in favor? Opposed? That's uh, one in favor is Counselor Gray, everyone else opposed?
Can I ask a different question? Um, uh, Counselor Epp, the, the Fire Hall Open House, will that be discussed at some point? Um, either at this table or at council table, just to learn the purpose, what the format is, what's going on?
I don't have any information on that.
No, you might not have information, but um, as the liaison for Public Works and Protective Services, the open house is coming? Will we have a discussion here to learn about it beforehand?
I'm, I don't know. Perhaps Mary Little does.
Do we know who's hosting it?
Yeah, um, the district is hosting it. This was discussed at the last uh, Fire Hall Steering Committee meeting. Counselor Donaldson and Counselor Epp, uh, your liaisons at, at that committee, so I, I suspect it was, it was on the agenda. I wasn't at the meeting. Um, so, uh, yeah, I would, if you would like to have uh, uh, information about it at the next council meeting, that can be arranged.
Thank you.
I, I wasn't able to attend the meeting, so Counselor Donaldson was there.
I, I was there and so just briefly, it, all it said on the agenda was open house, so nobody, there was no background or, or description or anything, so when the C A O did his report, um, came out a little bit there. Um, and it came a little bit later on in the agenda because sometimes we bounce around a little bit. Um, and so in reading the minutes, uh, we will be going back and fleshing out some details, I guess. There was a few thing, there was a lot of questions as what was the purpose of doing it, uh, who would be there, what was it actually for? Um, this was after the C A O gave us some uh, information on the U B C M's um, Strategic Priorities Grant and a meeting uh, with the grant people on that. Um, and then he announced to us that the mayor would be actually uh, hosting this open house. Uh, but we didn't know if it was on billboards or knowledge, wherever, but in their minutes, it was like they're gonna go back and flush out some of that. Uh, so the committee themselves didn't really know anything about it. Um, at least that was the sense I got because we were grappling with lots of ideas and whatnot. Uh, it was also reported that, from the C A O, that the uh, J D A architect would be there with his final report of the feasibility study. Um, my query was if they're there, would it be, it's not in the minutes, but um, it was part of the discussion. Would that take place in the chamber or would it take place in the fire hall? Um, if it's in the fire hall, then it's not livestreamed as which, i- it was council business, so that was where that would be. So those are some things that were floating around that were part of a discussion but not recorded in the minute, so still um, some unknowns. It, uh, except that there's a date. So the, the C A O did say it was November twelfth and that the mayor was hosting it and uh, there is, I don't know what the plan, total plan is, who was involved in planning.
To the chair, can I ask, Counselor Donaldson, is it okay if it's on the next agenda of the council meeting, so we can learn about the purpose and what's going on?
Well, I think it says, I think it says something actually in the Fire Hall Steering Committee minutes.
You see nothing there about the purpose?
No, the, the purpose isn't there. Somebody, somebody's making plans, but I don't know who all the people are. So.
Well, if it's a council meet, a council agenda item, then we should know what it is before it happens.
Well, perhaps when, when the C A O returns, we can request a, a report from him on, on what's gonna happen.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Alright, uh, so next we have the update from Counselor Gray, the Environment and Natural Areas Committee.
So I just have a verbal report today and I wanted to report on an amazing experience that I had a few weeks ago when I joined Shianu Council on a boat tour, walk in the woods on Mary Hill and then a special dinner hosted by Pearson College. All the native Shianu nation moving ahead on the establishment of Shianu Tribal Park on Mary Hill. This initiative represents Shianu's choice to dedicate the majority of its treaty lands to a conservation outcome and forego conventional development on its lands. Ultimately, the tribal park aims to ensure Shianu members can return home and rebuild their heritage for future generations. I've struck again at the generosity of Shianu in their hope to include their community, sharing land, the land education experiences with the greater community, that's us and others. At this time, the plan is to raise approximately fifteen million dollars to preserve Mary Hill as a tribal park. This value represents the foregone cost of conventional development on the lands in favor of Shianu-led ecological stewardship, cultural revitalization, conservation compatible economic development and healing. You can learn more by visiting W W W dot Shianutribalpark.ca. And at our last meeting, I shared a document that's going around uh, with the staff and, and council to look at, but it's available and the details are on the website. Um, Mayas took a break over the summer months, but we meet again next Tuesday, so I expect to have more to report at our next C O W meeting in November. Thank you.
Uh, thank you. Hey, um, Counselor Shukin on community planning?
Sure, very quickly, Parks and Trails Master Plan, I'm hoping to have a draft to this table at the November meeting. Um, that'll be just a draft of the main body of text. There's mapping and some information sheets yet to come and on. Our goal is to do one on each of the park and trail assets. Friends of the Bufferland is a, a grassroots community group that's taking shape. And we're, the, the goal is for them to begin looking at um, restoration efforts on the Bufferland and also potentially helping uh, the district with some of the planning as well. So you are likely gonna hear from them in December. And the Machosen Invasive Species Collective, um, again, congratulations to Neil and Brenda West. They have reached um, an agreement with the C R D for uh, invasive removal. Uh, Widdies Regional Park, Matheson Lake, Roch Cove and then sections of the Galloping Goose as well. And there's already work parties that are planned in, in um, especially in Widdies as well. And I just wanted to make a note about Machosen Day, you know, it was a great event. Uh, but like everything, there are costs, unexpected costs or escalating costs. And in this case, um, one particularly notable one was garbage collection, which as I understand it had in previous years actually been provided gratis by the company. But this year they, they were charging us, so that, that brought up the extra costs. And so And so we normally allocate ten thousand dollars in terms of supporting Machosen Day and this year we're gonna. Uh the committee's gonna have to access um eight hundred dollars. So we're already beginning to think about how we can reduce costs for next year. So for example, um one of the flaggers, uh sorry, we have a flagging crew that's there. And we can cut one of those people by, sorry, cut that group by one. So that'll, that'll help us reduce costs, so, yeah, lots of thinking going on there, thank you.
Thank you. Council Donaldson, an update on finance, this is what we all love.
Well, I'm talking about all my portfolios, not finance. Actually, with finance, we have our first budget meeting coming up on Thursday this week, the twenty third, so prepare yourselves. Uh as as we can hear, there's lots of asks, there's lots of stressors with finances. Um bailing people out of of financial situations, whether it's. Our annual fair or subsidizing the arts or, you know, um. Incendials with, you know, washed out stairs and stuff like that, so there's all sorts of things coming up. And then we got the big ones with, you know, paying for policing and E com and replacing the fire hall and and those sorts of things. So it will be a robust season of dialogue, we're starting early this year and getting uh hopefully the most of it, if not all of it. I say with optimism before Christmas, but we'll see where Mr. Creek takes us. Um so on to uh agriculture, uh Farmers Market um has been so busy this season. Um probably one of the best years in many, many, many years of uh busyness. Uh we see a video come out every Monday morning of what took place the day before, apparently I missed the little piglet. Um this week, I saw that posted this morning, so it was kind of neat. Um all the farm stands and uh farms also said, it it started out with a bit of a wet, sort of wet, sort of dry. Anyways, uh hard to get uh seeds going and in May, but um they're all, they all did very well. It was a good growing season, very intense, not too too hot. Uh Community Garden, again, another one that um grew successfully in a place we didn't think much was gonna grow. Uh but it has, and they had their uh pumpkin fundraiser uh on the weekend and of course it just poured. Uh but in anyways, they were all in really good spirits, the kids got, we finally moved indoors and it got a little bit crowded, probably shouldn't have been in that one spot. But we we made do for the uh hour that we were there, um and the kids were just actually getting right into uh saving seeds. And um uh farmers from uh Roaming Raven Farm came and did demonstrations on carving uh pumpkins. So that was really cool, it was Adam and Rosie Rans came out and they're most willing to come back next year. I learned a lot, it was really, really neat, uh I didn't get my hands into it, but um may maybe I'll, I'll try that this year. Um West Shore Parts Recreation, we're talking about our budget, um more will come out and that, everything is draft right now. Um the, they have a new mobile app for more expand, expansion of self-service when it comes to registering. At the registration desk, uh that's a real hotspot there, so they're working through that and that's um, we'll see more of that. Um onsite storage project, this is something new, we've had a lot of uh requests to put C cans on the property. And similar to Machosen, uh C cans scattered here and there without any guidelines of colors or placement. Whatever can be um a a distraction and a hindrance. So they've decided to, they've located two spots where they're gonna have these and they will buy them new. Uh some of them will have heat specifically for the uh hockey teams, the um youth hockey teams. I I learned that one of the hockey teams academies from Spencer. Uh the the buses that they're using, I I'm sure they said it was electric buses, they don't, they can't put the gear in there. I'm not sure if it's to do with the heating or the, something to do with weight and sliding, but also the gear has to go into a separate van and that gets more expensive. So they wanted to look for something onsite. Another hockey group came to us, they wanted to move from the Q Center up to the One Fuca Center. And uh looking for expansion of um change rooms and that sort of thing. So there will be some costs that we have to uh look at who's paying for what there. Most often, it's the tenants that uh would be paying for these sorts of things. But the C cans, the staff figured out that if they got the C cans that they're looking at. Put a roof over them that that preserves them a little longer, puts some lighting in, that in four years, they would have paid for themselves. They would be rented out to whoever the users are. Um we're already aware of the um master plan is ongoing and thanks for those who gave uh me some feedbacks. I push that back off to the um the staff at uh West Shore. Uh also with, on the same topic of finances, the Revival Public Library is um going through their budget as well. They have hired, um they've had a difficult time hiring staff since COVID, but they have been successful now. And in um getting back their COVID uh staff, um not fully, but better. Uh nine assistant librarians, so that'll be reflective in their uh their budget as well. They did experience some labor disruption with uh during U B C M actually, with uh the B C G U, but that has now um been addressed. So there, uh everybody's working uh within the library, so they got stalled for one day, everything was shut down. Um and then the digital access is uh something I've been working on with um CERC and the library. Just to promote library um services, because a lot of residents here uh may or may not understand. That we actually can do a lot of things just through um uh our devices, whether it's com- computers or phones. Or tablets or whatever, not to drive into the library um weekly or whatever the usage is. But you can actually download all sorts of information, whether it's um periodicals, uh books, audiobooks, saving things. I'm actually gonna go to that, that's this Thursday, the twenty third, for one hour over at CERC. Um and learn how to do it myself, um I've been at the library board and I still don't know how to do this. So anyways, that's kind of uh exciting, bringing uh library here, there's a few other things, uh residents have been asking about having a library in Machosen. That's not likely gonna happen, we already have three libraries in the West Shore. Maybe at some point there would be a satellite library um put into Royal Bay, we don't know. But one of the things that I did bring up with uh staff at a board meeting was um maybe doing something like. A mo- uh bookmobile that is specific to curated books for Machosen. So we're gonna look at what the logistics are on that, they're very interested in working with us on that. So, because um, you know, we have different demographics here than than uh say Collet or Langford. And the library's just a little bit further, but nice to know that the CERC is gonna have their little uh bus taking people regularly. Although I think that's probably only for seniors, but I don't know, maybe they'll open up to, well, I think seniors is about fifty five plus, I could probably get in on that. But anyways, eh I don't know, we'll see, other people are are working during the day if it's a daytime thing. Um yeah, and then um uh U B C M, um lots of different things there with ministry meetings are always interesting. Um only one really stood out in favor for us, that they could provide uh some resources, the others. Again, everybody's tightened up their um their budgets and whatnot, so there's not any money to be had per se for grants. Um the egg tour was, eh I was, it was going to be a very long day, but I'm so glad that I actually went on it. Um and got to talk to some of the farmers firsthand of what's going, what they're dealing with out on the peninsula, the goose. Geese were a a big one, uh where there's grain crops from the um, the one farm I went to, it's called Field Five Farm. I kept having to read, read the five to know which order the words were, because it's Field Five Farms, it's three F's. Uh that was quite fascinating, they grow grain for the beverage industry and they have a big malting plant uh there. But they're having problems with geese eating their, their seedlings. And I remember that being reported out at pack, uh so that was brought up again on that tour. The tour over at Mitchell's Farm, um as we'd been at North Star Farm, they had strings up for geese, they don't have a problem. So one of the politicians from Up Island had brought up to Mr. Mitchell about stringing over his four hundred acres. Uh to prevent uh geese and of course the logistics of that are unattainable. So uh he was very polite on how he um responded to that, so um but it was all good information for us to have. Anyways, lots of good stuff, um at U B C M, always coming back with um new ideas and broaden our perspective a bit. That's all I have, see you Thursday.
Thank you. Um, okay, so now we're on to the correspondence uh fraction, which would be from, for the Machosen Bullfrog Management Project. Um they would like to have uh sites three and four visited more than once a year. I'm not sure about cost of that, but I guess that will come up uh during the budget. But given the, you know, they they are very, seem like they're very successful from their charts here at actually collecting these little rotters. Um I I thought when they talked about the insides of the, of the, some of them that was ducklings and tree frogs and stuff. It's pretty awful, really, what those things can eat. Um, yeah, anyway, um I'm not sure about the the bottom one, I got, I think, for me, I think the C R D is, needs to do the survey of Matheson Lake. I don't think Machosen um really can afford to to do that. Uh so we could probably send a letter or something to encourage C R D parks to do that. But um that's would be my comments on it, but what else does everybody else think? Mayor Little?
Yeah, I, um Stan Orchard, he's a very well-known herpetologist and his work with the District of Machosen. Trying to eradicate these um bullfrogs, which are so invasive. And they can, the 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 females can lay, uh I think millions of eggs, it's it's really quite terrible. So the work that they do is really important uh for minimizing the spread of the invasive species. But also to maintain uh biodiversity in those regions because um they are so pervasively hungry. Um and and so I would um, I would recommend that we write to the C R D and ask them to. Or I can have a a conversation, or Jay can have a conversation with with somebody at the C E R C regarding uh requesting support. Or requesting them to uh contract Stan Orchard for for Matheson Lake. Um but I would also suggest that we recommend um uh to council to um have those sites three and four. But it also looks like uh uh site twelve uh was listed as a special concern as well. So I think it'd be prudent of us to to um contract him for that site as as well. Um although six uh sites sixteen and seventeen, they were ear- easily cleared of the bullfrogs. But there were were um bu- bullfrogs there. And so it, um I think we should stay on top of it at those three other sites um as well. And then then the first site, uh which was the Machosen Golf Course, they, they felt that it was uh depopulated now. Um but if this is one invasive species, that if we don't stay onto it, it, they just uh proliferate like rabbits, so.
If th- those were two motions or one motion, I'll second them. That the mayor writes to the C R D.
Okay.
I think was was the first one, and the second one was that recommend to council. So it's three, four, and twelve, should be visited more than one time.
Uh three, four, uh twelve, and then uh sites sixteen and seventeen.
Are are we looking though for budget from Mr. Orchard?
Yeah, and I mentioned, I thought so through the chair, I thought uh would, actually, our CFO Creek can bring us up on that.
Through the chair, um so he's charging right now uh five hundred dollars a night. So if he added two more on, another thousand dollars, um just bill for this one, for six nights, three thousand. So just depending if he increased costs for twenty twenty-six, but hopefully not too much. That's what you'd be looking at.
Doesn't seem to sound though like sites sixteen and seventeen were really uh uh much of a concern.
Yeah, I tend to follow his recommendation.
Yeah.
Uh three and four is what he said, I think the mayor thought twelve was a bit special in another way.
Uh through the chair, I just mentioned sixteen and seventeen because his conclusions were that sixteen and seventeen were easily cleared of the large bullfrogs. In twenty twenty-five, but the question remains of where else they may arise in the the vicinity. And so um I just think if they, if they think there's some bullfrogs remaining there, then it'd be great to to eradicate them. But if if council doesn't wanna do those two sites, I would be happy with uh three, four and and twelve.
Okay, is that acceptable in the motion, three, four and twelve, and that uh the mayor contact the C R D? Do you wanna write, reverb that that motion, Council Shukin? Okay, that motion is moved by Council Gray, seconded by Council Shukin, whatever exactly it is.
Is the mayor uh made the motion, I see.
I'm sorry, um Miss Hanson, yeah, the mayor's motion, sorry.
Sorry, it was um that that sites three and three, four and twelve be revisited next year.
Right.
And that the mayor write a letter to the C R D requesting a compreh- comprehensive survey of Mo- Matheson Lake.
Perfect, it can always depend on you to sort it out, thank you. All right, um I think we have no other business.
We call the question.
Oh yeah, sorry, call the question, like, all in favor, I think, now, can move on, I think, to adjournment. Uh move adjournment, okay, moved by Council Donaldson, seconded by Mayor Little, all in favor?